Okay, roll call. Bender?
Here.
Ermeline?
Here.
Maynau?
Here.
Oldenburg?
Not here.
And Simmons let me know he would not be here.
I'd like to call the Board of Trustees to order and welcome as such. A roll call for the board.
Ermeline?
Here.
Feeny? Maloney?
Here.
Maynau?
Here.
Zhong?
Here.
White?
Here.
Sigami?
Here.
And Feeny did say he would be excused, just so you know.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz he let us all know at the last meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
A joint? Yeah, I just. Approval of the minutes from the previous joint meeting of September twentieth twenty twenty one.
Who for approval?
Motion by Maynau?
I'll second it.
And Bender? On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Do you wanna do the board too regularly?
Um, sure. Um, same motion for the board on the joint meeting of minutes.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zhong, seconded by White. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
Um, on the for the finance, any public comments? I hope there's on the board.
And, uh, yep, Nate, you said no? Okay. I think it's all you now.
Okay, um, is there anyone on the Zoom meeting by computer or by phone? No, alright, thank you. Knowledge, work products and transmittal?
Nothing?
Okay. Educational presentation and reports, review and discussion of the twenty twenty two budget, other funds and so forth. We'll just go ahead with whatever's on this here. We've got special funds, debt service utilities and capital projects.
Yeah, we're gonna do our part play in presentation. Okay, so today we want to talk both to about our all our other funds, so everything except for the general fund for revenues and expenditures. Next slide. So special revenues. Special revenue funds are funds that are used to account for revenue from specific sources that are legally used for expenditures for specific purposes. Um, the funds that we consider our special revenue funds are refuse recycling, the TIF district number one, CDA TIF district number one, TIF district number two, CDA TIF district number two, the aquatic center, room taxes, grant fund, civic social and parking rack. So just a quick reminder that the CDA funds are the funds that we have because we decided that for our TIF districts, we wanted to take and take out community development revenue bonds. Um, as a reminder, the village cannot take out revenue bonds. So what we had to do when we decided that is to form the Community Development Authority. And with that, the Community Development Authority owns the land and the TIF, they rent it out to the village TIF District Special Revenue Fund and they pay their rent with increments. So what you're gonna see when you we look through those funds is a large revenue coming in as the rent and then a large transfer out for the debt payment. Okay, on to the refuse recycling.
Do you want me to take it up?
Go.
Alright, so the refuse recycling fund, um, for twenty twenty two, we did not change the fees that are charged. So the fee will remain at a hundred and sixty seven dollars, which goes on the tax bill. Um, we're budgeting a three percent increase in the charge from advanced disposal for contracting. That's the max that they're allowed to charge in there um, per year and CDA came in around that. So we're anticipating that they'll probably raise our expenses for that. Um, and that's covered in the one sixty seven yet. So in this fund, the services in here are relief pickup, bulk item drop off, the electronic recycling event, um, refuse and recycling services and then the yard waste site.
We also have the landfill, as you can see in there. Um, the landfill is funded by general revenues. On top, you'll see a transfer in and that approximately equals the expense in the landfill. But we also receive three thousand dollars a year for the landfill um, from the town. So they do contribute towards that expense.
Just.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm I'm looking down on the fund balance of December thirty first for twenty twenty one. It's gonna be eighty thousand nine hundred forty. Is that because we're not at the end of the year yet or or is that what we're expecting to be at by?
That's what we budgeted for. Our estimate is a hundred and fifteen oh seventy two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that three thousand dollars was that covered? Is that for waste pickup for them or what?
The three thousand dollars in agreement from back and from nineteen ninety six when we incorporated that the towns that they would pay three thousand dollars.
And he just fixed number every year, no change in?
Correct.
That's for the landfill.
That's for the landfill, yep. Um, we we also do, as you can see in that number, if you look at intergovernmental revenues, we include the town on our contract. So the refuse and recycling that I get at from my house is actually through the village's contract and the town pays the village for the amount of containers that are located in the town.
So but then when our contract changed, the price changed, that three thousand also changed, doesn't it?
Not for the landfill, so the three thousand from the town is just for the landfill.
That's for the.
Okay, I got that.
It's ongoing operation costs that monitoring and all of that.
Yep, that's fine.
Sorry.
Okay.
Next one. Okay, TIF district number one. The TIF does that the fund balance in TIF one for twenty twenty one is increasing significantly mostly because of the um reimbursement that we received from ATC, the two point three million dollars that we received as refund for selling our the poles back. Um, the fund balance is projected to go moving forward as we decide what projects we'll be taking. Um, for the twenty twenty two budget, you can see a estimated fund balance of eleven million dollars. Um, Weston Avenue is planned for reconstruction in twenty twenty three with an estimated phase one cost of ten million dollars. So there is a reason why we do plan on building up that fund balance so we can um continue with the projects for twenty twenty three. Any questions on TIF?
This is a fund balance of the project that was the avenue rebuild. Are you s- is it possible that we're not going to borrow for it? We'll have enough reserve?
We are not borrowing.
That'd be great. But it does deplete our reserve considerably.
Um, but if you look at our, we are anticipating approximately six million every year. I think it's actually gonna be higher. The values in our TIFs went up quite a bit. Obviously, the values are generated by the state, the equalized values in our TIFs and the market value went up quite a bit, so.
Thank you. Be nice enough to borrow for a project for once.
Good question on the under um, the admin or economic development admin. Year to date, you are for, excuse me, for two thousand um twenty one, is that one ninety nine? You're saying it's gonna be at one ninety two. But are we down one employee? And and are we replacing that employee or are we gonna? Cuz it's only down seven thousand dollars and I think the employee was somewhere around sixty five, seventy, wasn't it?
Yeah, so the twenty twenty one budget, we actually had three hundred thousand in there. So if we're at two hundred thousand for like the estimate for this year. So the one ninety two, um, I'm guessing there's other expenses in there that decreased besides just wages.
Or not.
Or go ahead.
And then would it include legal fees and?
Yes. Legal fees were up this year for the TIF. We didn't budget that high for next year.
So the overall budget is down like a hundred and ten thousand versus what the admin used to.
Yeah, but we're not looking at how you're in another person again, are we?
Right now, there's no proposal to add someone, I guess, because simply because of uncertainty of life in the TIF yet and what how would that?
Yeah.
Position be funded then going forward.
Okay.
Um, we could see we have the repayment of the LLC on there. Um, twenty twenty two is the last year of that payment. Um, that was from the lawsuit that was settled in two thousand and seventeen from the cross point.
When is the last payment for that?
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two.
That's another half a million or?
Nope, it's two hundred and ten.
Okay.
So at the last meeting, when we had the Schmitz were questioning us on, I thought they were actually talking about this, but yet they were actually talking about what we owed Cheryl back. So is that one in the same? It is one in the same, yes.
Yes, the water, right.
Okay, cuz they didn't refer to it, nor did we refer to it as a lawsuit. We referred to it as their money that we owed them back. To us, right?
Which?
Right.
It is.
Okay.
They sold us because they thought they should get the money back to us.
And in one and in bigger chunks.
That was brought up, I thought at one point.
Yeah, I I just didn't follow it as well as I should have, I guess. I just wanna make sure it was one thing, yep. Cuz that's that's how I've heard it when Keith and I talk and whoever, okay.
A conflict of terms means the same thing, I mean it's.
Yes.
Essentially.
Okay.
Thank you. So before you move off this slide, that Weston Avenue project, talking there about phase one, there's actually a second phase. There's that commentary there and.
Is is phase one a distance or an amount of work?
Well, both.
Okay.
Um, phase one is Ryan to J.
Ryan to J. Oh, perfect, that's fine. Okay, good. So then Ryan to Camp Phillips.
Ryan to Camp Phillips would be phase two.
It's phase two.
Both phases.
Where does that phase?
Avenue is probably the same.
Where where?
Ballpark is estimated cost right now.
The lights in front of the hospital to Alderson, what phase is that in?
So that's a, I guess it's a, it's not part of that phase, that's a, but it's a twenty twenty four projected project with the Rothschild.
Alright, half and half.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, good. So whatever happens there won't affect phase one or two.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
What do they estimate? Number two is the one, don't you have any idea?
Being phase two?
Phase two.
I think be roughly the same.
Okay.
Order of same cost for the.
What is the distance? Is it relatively the same?
The total is like, um, somewhere five.
No, I mean from Ryan either way, is each way the other east and west the same distance? No?
Kind of, no.
Which one, just which one is longer? Just estimate.
Close. Ryan, Ryan to J is about two miles.
Yep.
And uh, X to Ryan is about one point seven five.
Okay. So I would think phase one will be more expensive plus with the water.
Yeah, I mean phase two has a little bit, um, we we got a little bit more of a pavement section right at X, but then and then I think we also had the twiddle in there initially. Whereas from Ryan to J, we added is just a two lane road. So there's more pavement in that, uh.
Say that word again.
Twiddle, the two way left turn lane.
Know what happens with me if I don't know what, I don't understand the word, I have to.
Who's acronym?
Stop spitting. I need to now explain what a twiddle is.
It's the two way left turn lane, so like up here where it's, you can go the suicide lane.
Which is, I don't know which.
Well, I can't wait to use that with my wife while she's driving. Please get, please get in the twiddle lane. She's gonna stare at me and probably park the car.
Chris Mark at the end of the road.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, thank you.
So phase one is gonna be next year, cost is gonna be approximately.
It's twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three. Cost is gonna be approximately.
But we're thinking about ten million right now, I mean.
A million and then face two is gonna be the next year?
Twenty twenty four.
Right?
Correct.
And the cost would be?
Get that one right now at eleven million, so slightly more.
A little bit more wider sections?
Yeah. And there's and there's less. There is water and sewer in, you know.
Infrastructure.
A little bit on that section.
But it's got the walking bath.
Farm system goes under two. Alright.
Next. Alright. Okay, here's the CDA, so the only activity as I was mentioning before, the miscellaneous revenues is the the increment that's received from TIF district number one and then that gets transferred out to the debt service so we can pay the CDA debt. Not much activity in this fund. Next fund.
Yeah, a question on this.
Yep.
I I know it's down the road, but I I recall signing the paperwork for the loan for this thing and darn it choked. So the plan is for this to be paid off, the CDA loan in?
Twenty thirty one.
Okay.
Unless we can.
Pay it off earlier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Which is only ten years from now, by the way.
I made some note of it.
So then we have TIF two. Um, we have thirty seven thousand dollars budgeted for the entryway signage. Um, this one also has a fund balance that is growing um, until we take on some projects. Uh, if we do not choose to take on any new projects, we should look at closing TIF two depending what we want to do in there and whatnot. And then this one has the same thing. Um, we're, or no, is this one getting? Yeah, lease, sorry.
Yep.
This one has the lease to that hundred and fifty six thousand, which you'll see again on the CDA slide. Questions on TIF two or things to add?
Yeah.
So one of the things that that I've noticed at several meetings we've had over the past several months is people are um, asking or assuming that they're gonna get so much back per thousand tax rebate when they close these things. And we hear or I hear numbers all over the place as far as what is it gonna be, how?
Seven cents.
Pardon?
Seven cents.
On two.
On TIF two.
So seven, does everybody get that or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's seven cents per thousand or what?
Per thousand, assessed value.
Seven dollars per hundred thousand.
I think it's approximate.
Approximately.
Yeah, it's approximate cuz what happens is when we go through the our levy limit worksheet, the limit, they allow you to only bring back fifty percent of the value.
Yes, and it's a percentage of like the total equalized value in there. So as that number changes, what you're actually going to get back changes too.
That seems a little unsure. That we can only get back half of maybe.
Yes, so there is a bad side to TIF.
So what happens to the other half?
That stays within the tax limit increment.
Yeah, I understand that, but with the other municipality, the other government entities get their share or?
They are limited too, they don't get it all.
So what if there's some money left after everybody gets their legally authorized share?
It then becomes a grant.
So.
No, I'm just, I think grants are funny because it's over.
That's why I'm, I, that's why I'm.
I'm a little confused, so.
So you are, so why?
Are you talking at the end of the life of the TIF where there's money left?
Hmm, yeah, well, that's a good example.
So at the end of the life, if say we don't spend a penny more, at the end of twenty two, we have nine hundred twenty thousand in there. Um, and we're closed. So what we do is we will have to distribute those funds after our final audit. The auditor will tell us how much we have to give to each taxing jurisdiction. So those funds will be dispersed. So for the levy limit worksheet, the value that we don't get to tax on, that just gets absorbed. The taxpayers receive a relief and it's looked at as some of our taxpayers um, have mentioned before, that's the return on the investment. They invested, paid higher taxes, so for all the services in the TIF district that the TIF district is not paying now and when we close it, they get a drop in their taxes as a reward for paying higher taxes for so many years. It's one way to look at it.
Well, I I could, you can see the confusion now, you know, I've been at this a while and it's still, it's like, okay, I don't quite understand it. Maybe Bob understands a little bit better than I do. You're smiling, Bob.
Yep, uh, E?
I'm just a quick question, I um, I gen- I I know that you mentioned that um, we should look into uh, potentially some projects, otherwise we should close this TIF, this TIF district here. Are we struggling to find projects or is there a reason why we're, why um, I I guess I'm just asking that for clarification here?
Well, TIF two project plan actually includes estimated cost or I should say, oh, I had some estimated cost, but it also had project designations for what the funds could be used for. And with the most recent um, proposal for the, for a project plan amendment, the main reason was for making sure there was explicit capability to designate some of those funds for certain activities like developer incentives, some infrastructure projects that perhaps weren't explained in the last TIF amendment. As it stands right now, that proposal has been rejected by um, actual the Plan Commission and uh, the only amendment that was made was for the boundary change. So unless, you know, we could, we could potentially have a, you know, it's attorney look at it or some expert and say, well, you probably can uh, use some of these funds that way. I don't think that'd be a very, a very, very good strategy right now based on the Plan Commission. That I, I um, I know that one of the concerns from, you know, Greg Johnson at Ellers is that the original estimated maximum expenditures in TIF two have have been attained, they've been reached. So in order for us to spend more money, we would wanna get some opinion of that at the very minimum. Uh, so it still would be a potential that we could go through another amendment process, but again, that's more of a direction of the Village Board um, to embark on that again, uh, if that's what we're going to do. But it's right now it's set up that it would go to the Plan Commission for a hearing first, so I, I guess again, the timing would not be very good at this point in time anyway.
So, I just have a real quick, Lauren, of our, so your ask on on TIF or TIF two value and then what is, not that it's gonna happen, but if TIF one closed, what is that value? Is it closer to eighty cents a thousand?
TIF two is seven cents, around seven cents.
TIF one.
Oh, you're looking for TIF one.
Why on earth, why don't you come up with?
I I just wanna, I just wanna just have the comparison, that's all.
Over a dollar.
I thought it was eighty cents, is it over a dollar?
It's closer to a dollar.
It's. It also, we also have to pay our debt first before.
Yeah, yeah.
That one's a little.
I know, I, but that that that's what, that's, when you talk about that and how much.
Right.
That's not the one they, that they're talking about, that it's that one, so.
Eighty nine cents per thousand.
Okay, I I just heard eighty.
Two hundred thousand dollar house, you're looking at a savings of a hundred and seventy eight dollars.
Okay. So just a ballpark, when.
Yes.
When Wu Sheng and if if we're getting off course, somebody stop me. But Wu Sheng had brought up during the process of those last couple meetings um, of Schofield Avenue from Birch to Camp Phillips, not to the same level. I'm I'm certainly sure that the boards and commission wouldn't want all the maintenance in them, but you know, the roads are already that wide, but but not maybe all the, all the wild stuff. Uh, what Birch to Camp Phillips is how long?
Uh, half mile.
Half mile, okay. I mean, I I I know you, you have no idea what it would be beautiful, beautiful, you know.
Simplification.
Okay. I mean, five million? I mean, four million?
No, I mean, I, may, I I would think maybe a million at the most, I mean.
Million, okay.
For um, for um.
Yeah.
Quick trip to Business Fifty One is about two million?
Okay, wait, a quick trip to Business Fifty. Birch Street, okay, got it, the other way. Oh, really, two million?
About two million.
With that whole Brandon Farber and whatever that was.
I don't think it would be that level.
Yeah, I know that, I know, but two million with all that, all the lighting, the banners, the the W's and all the trees and bushes and.
That was also almost twenty years ago.
Yeah, I know, I know, it doesn't seem like it.
Yeah.
But but it it is. It's pretty, I I don't care what people say about it. My only detraction is the maintenance.
Yep.
Yeah, that that's a killer for me when I see our people out there.
You know, Mark, since we did that improvement to Schofield Avenue, all the development is started.
Yeah, I I I totally agree.
And.
Yep.
The other thing is, I think we should put the sidewalk on the north side of the Schofield Avenue. Mm-hmm. Because people crossing and it is dangerous and we don't have a really designated crossing except maybe one or two places. These are all safety issue and it has to be at.
Yep. I I was here when it was bloody twenty nine, so when it was just cow pass.
Yep.
On both sides.
Right.
I I couldn't believe it when the highway actually opened and, yep.
Five crashes on there, bro.
Alright, sorry to, to the attraction. He, I'm sorry, yeah, hands are up over here.
Michael.
Yep, Michael.
For clarification, I did drag up the old original TIF two as modified in two thousand and four. And it's got prod, it's got very vague references to projects that are permitted under there.
Right.
And it's not, as far as I recall reading through it, it's not just beautification.
Right, you are correct, and the light and the last amendment. But again, the expenditure threshold or ceiling had been reached according to the financial analysis.
So we haven't reached the description of the product, but we've reached the money?
Well, yes.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Right.
My question was, what is the status of fixing the road after the amendment was turned down by planning?
Well, then our source of funds would become uh, general obligation bond or operational funds or. It would.
But I mean, can you include that under the TIF yet if it's still there?
No.
Well, I think just something that's gonna be clarified.
That wasn't even on the list of alternates Wu Sheng brought about. We we didn't even have it on an alternate.
The.
All the things also from Birch to Camp Phillips, I believe he brought it up.
No, it was, it was in the uh.
Was it one, two or three? I I remember seeing it at one, two or three.
It was a second priority in the way.
At Dale's?
Proposed amendment.
Okay, but not at the first one. When we met here.
It's in the list.
Cuz we met here, he brought it up at the table, I was back with Michael and it was not, I don't believe it was on the list until it got to Dale's.
Um.
Cuz you said, oh, yes, we could do that.
I I seem to remember.
Yeah.
I mean, the three and a half million dollar figure, I seem to remember that.
You do?
Yeah.
At this meeting?
Yeah, at one of our meetings.
Okay, I stand corrected.
The the least amount we need to do there is the street repair.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry.
So the three and.
If your hand goes higher, then there you get called on?
So the three and a half million that Steve's talking about is to reconstruct, repave from Normandy to Birch, which is in the TIF two boundary.
Right.
And then the piece Wu Sheng's talking about from Birch to Camp Phillips.
That's cuz I was.
So they're two separate things that are being talked about.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify that. And just to follow up on that, so then in the, in the proposed projects in the last, last proposed amendment version, that anything that was outside the TIF boundary is made a lower priority. Um, although I don't think that project is in the higher priorities of the US, maybe I'm wrong.
Five million dollars for both those pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Was proposed.
Barbara, do you have a question then?
Well, just, I guess I'm trying to figure out is where is the status of, cuz that is probably the the most important, to me, the most important part that TIF right now is to get the road up to great before we close it. Because once we close it, we aren't gonna do it, plain and simple.
This is important information on the Plan Commission meeting on August ninth, uh, in the pro, potential infrastructure related project costs, is this what we're talking about?
Right.
So repave Schofield Avenue from Birch Street to Western Village Limits, which would be Business Tower Fifty One, was three point five million.
Yep.
And approved design in Birch Street Schofield Avenue intersection, that would be from um, Birch Street Schofield Avenue, I I don't know what it, that was one point five million.
To where?
That was a redoing the intersection specifically.
Intersection is specific, right?
Right. In the extent, okay. So the the two bigger ones were amounted to five million dollars. So.
Now, cuz, because I I think the questioning from the commission was, you know, let's target more of Schofield Avenue and that's when Wu Sheng said, well, could we go with the Camp Phillips? Which I think everybody kind of bought into.
Where do we, how do we do that? What I keep asking.
Gotta, we're muddy right now.
Okay, so I think the the options would be proposing another project plan amendment. Or I guess before we do that, have some expert um, review of it and see if they feel that that we would be within our.
Can we be talking about this right now?
More money?
Can we be talking about this right now?
It's all about budgeting, I think so.
Okay, alright, good, okay, just wanna make sure, I'm usually the one that's talking.
So I think those would be the two, those would be the two options.
Yep.
Like we said, because the longer we sit on it, the longer it's like, let's get it cleared up and whether we can, can.
By, uh, just a heads up, by April, we need to decide.
Yeah. And April comes up pretty fast.
Deadline where the board has to choose to close it, but I cannot, if I'm.
From April, it's the deadline where the board has to choose to close it, but I cannot keep a firm balance like that.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to come.
Husheng?
Is it that plan project amendment has to be approved by Planning Commission or Board?
We, we have it set up currently, it would go to the Plan Commission for the hearing first.
I think you should come to the Board because.
But the laws that.
Planning Commission is gonna drag and drag and.
Well, can you explain that a little better? Keep it simple. I don't know, Steve, you, you're.
No, I know, I, I, the, the, the way that it was all put together originally, the reason I seconded the motion is that I didn't like this, being able to shuffle figures back and forth. And I, I, I think, you know, I said at the meeting at Dale's that I'm okay with redoing the Schofield Avenue, but I don't like all these other projects that are outside of the, the TID being thrown in. And if we don't use it for that, then we can give it to another developer. And that was how the wording came out to me and I was, I was uncomfortable with that. And I think others were. If it would have been that we were gonna use the three point five million period to, to redo that and do the intersection or whatever, if, if it's dated and needs to be done, I think that it could be changed for the, for the TID to do that, if it needs to be done. But that's not how it was presented. And I, I was hoping I was clear when I said that, that I was seconding the motion because it wasn't clear and I wasn't, I was uncomfortable.
And my question back to you again is if, and this is, I know you can't speak for the.
I'm not speaking to anybody, I'm just saying how I was.
But if it was presented in a precise, this is the money, this is what we're going to do, improve Schofield Avenue and the intersection if it needs it, that's what, this three and a half million, that's what it is. Do you think the Planning Committee or yourself would look at it in a more favorable manner?
But I, it wasn't just that the planning, cause I, I raised the question going back to, I think when the original presentation of the corridor plan was, where he was talking about these different monies. I think we needed to do a better job explaining that. If, if we're able to put something together and say, the three and a half million, and if it doesn't come from the TID, is then gonna increase or come out of our general obligation funds? Then, but, but, but that's the alternative, right? If it doesn't come out of there, then it comes, it has to be paid. If, if the, the street itself is dated enough, it needs to be replaced. And I don't know what the ratings are and I don't remember if we've ever even had discussions on that. But I think that that process wasn't very clear because we got caught up in some of these other projects.
But I, I, I guess I'm, my suggestion would be if it went back to the Planning Committee, that it would be done.
Yeah, I, I don't know how everybody else is voting. I just know that when I've, when I've asked that question, it, it, it didn't get answered in the other, in the other meetings.
Even I'm sitting out there and listening to it, my.
But you said in the second, the first meeting was even in my world, and I think I'm genuinely pretty up on stuff. I was completely confused.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I, I was sitting there asking questions of Michael and Husheng. Um, and then actually, Michael had some answers of, well, we just need to get to this ten point eight, so then we can do whatever. And I'm just, it just wasn't making sense. It just wasn't. And, well, he, he's first and Lauren.
But I think one of the concern was they brought it up, they said because they add their water treatment in there, therefore it doesn't belong there. But I think it does because that water treatment affect all the TIF district. And I, and I got that, I've witnessed this. It caused the business people in the community to clean up the water heater continuously or replacing it. And I use Basil as example because I know that for facts. In one year, she had to replace three of them. One of them was defected, but the other two was the result of the water. Now, I, I, I sent this to Kirk, to Keith, we charge the people in this community for the water. We must give them quality water, not the water which is contaminated with the manganese and iron. We pay premium price for our water. So it is our job to provide the quality water to the community. I'll go with that. Lauren?
So, some of the issues that were brought up, I, I think were the, in, uh, Jilllic Avenue and Alderson's section, the.
Alderson. Ross and Alderson.
I, I get that. Uh, the other issue was that the Plan Commission went through this whole plan and made changes and recommendations. Cause they felt, as I recall, they felt that there wasn't enough money in there for developer incentive. If you recall the stuff, the conversations that do I move it around?
Yep.
And that was, that was part of the deal. It sounds like a slush fund, perhaps you should have said this much for developers and the story. Once that money's gone, no more developer money. But the, the understand, the way I understood it was if these projects didn't cost as much or weren't as extensive as originally planned, that the, the funds left over from designated to that project could be put to other things. And I think that's the, the contention of, this is, it's not clearly defined, what are those other things?
And, and we're assuming that the Plan Commission understood everything coming into that meeting. I did not understand. I, I'm an alternate. We, we have a, a request right now from one of the Plan Commission members for education, just for an update on everything right now. And, uh, you know, sometimes when people aren't talking, it's, it's not that, that they understand everything. It's that they don't wanna look, you know, they don't, they feel intimidated, they don't know.
It is a lot, it is a lot of work.
Two meetings ago, one of our staff members actually kind of went back to one of them and said, you know, come on here, spend some more time here, spend some more time here. And, and, you know, I, I'm sorry, but this is where, you know, a lot of the commission members and committee members are here to serve, period. At fifty bucks, forty bucks a, a deal. And when that gets told you from someone making, you know, eighty thousand dollars a year, that's a little hard to swallow. That's really tough. You know, you're trying to take it in, you're trying to read the four hundred, you know, page packet.
There is a lot.
In three days, in three days, that's a novel every month, a full novel.
It is a lot.
It's a, it's, and, and to truly understand it, you know, some skim it, some may not look at it. But they, they feel, I, we certainly know that you look at it. I rely on you.
I'm fortunate that, that I've been around long enough, I've read through those things. They do change.
You know, so.
I would not expect somebody to read all that stuff, Mark.
Yep, I can't expect seven people to, to be up that high on that work, you know, and, and I think some of the verbiage at night was, we're expecting staff to help us with some of this. And they, they felt, they didn't understand what was happening when, like, especially when we, we got a ten point eight million dollar ask for, for the highest amount. And yet, all we need to do is just get this approved tonight so that we actually don't have to actually do those projects. We can kind of do this. And when that started, that's when some of the people started having questions, what do you mean doing this? You can call whatever you want. I'm not gonna even use the word, but hit us the hand first.
I think, I think one of the main messages too, maybe it got lost, I guess, was that none, no project would be undertaken if the performance of the TID was not gonna support it.
And upon approval of the Village Board.
Right, right. And, yeah, I guess I, I'll say, yeah, we, certainly there could have been a better job of explaining it. It kind of goes back to a need and perhaps to do more onboarding, more effort on onboarding when we have new members on commi- commissions and committees. And the Board, um, it's just one of those things that we, you know. So identifying, I guess, is a need, so.
I got one, Steve?
But if I could, you know, if I could just, we, we, we have to be aware that people are gonna react to it if they don't have an understanding of it. They're gonna wanna stay away from it. The more complicated we make it, the more, um, things we try to address or spread it around on, makes it more confusing. We have a, you know, we have water utility, sewer utilities to pay for our sewer and water. To, to say that we should be spending money out of that TID to put wells in to service at, at the expense of the TID to, um, increase the water, it's not what the TID was originally designed for. So when, when we confuse that, I, I feel, when, when you, you bring that up or you wanna put that in there, it now changes what we're doing and kind of hides the actual use of that money for the betterment of, of the, the utilities. And I think that when that happens, people have a negative response to it. And just as I, I think I raised that one or two meetings before we had our meeting here, when Mr. Mumford was, you know, saying, saying he was in favor of the, um, you know, certain incentives, but there was no parameters, there was no guidelines on what the, the, um, the developer fees were gonna be used for or limits to it. If we would have said something to the effect that we're gonna assist and tear down the, the buildings or we're gonna acquire two properties in the amount of five hundred thousand or whatever it might have been, I think people would have been more receptive to, to it. But by having all these different projects to the tune of ten million dollars, everybody just kind of like, it's just, it's too much money, it's too much walking around money. That's, that's how I am taking it. Now, that, that's how I vote.
And, and, yep.
I don't think water utility got enough money to take care of all this project in the TIF district. Because me talking, I don't know, that TIF not plan how much it's gonna be, but it's not this small amount of the money. So, and, and if the money in the TIF support that, it is the right project for it. I understand what you're saying. I agree with you. But the money we have in the water utility has other expense also, is not just for that treatment.
But does that mean the utilities should go up in price? What I'm saying is to help fund that, if that's the case. Uh, to, to me, that's a simpler thing to say is that if we're gonna spend millions of dollars in the utilities, this is what our utility, uh, charges should go to. Whereas taking it from one to pay something else, I'm not on sewer and water. You know, there's other people on Weston Avenue, Alderson and elsewhere that are not on sewer and water. So in essence, if, if that tax money isn't coming as tax relief to us, then we're subsidizing utilities. And, and I think that people have a problem with that.
Yep.
Mike?
I, I mean, I guess, you know, the tree and plant was about a five and a half million dollar project. We had a quarter of it assigned to the TID. A lot of that was, e- even including it was based on some feedback we had to staff that, you know, there was a benefit to the TIF district. You know, water utility, I believe, is probably the single highest taxpayer to the Village of Weston. Maybe not the highest, but close to about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars every year goes from the water utility back to the village. So even if people aren't on water and sewer, there is a benefit from having the water infrastructure in the Village of Weston. But again, if that was a project that we need to mix, you know, okay, you know, it'll be funded by utility rates. And if water rates need to go up in the future to fund it, you know, I, I guess we'd do that.
Yeah, I just feel that it's, it's simple. People are able to look at it.
Simple, simple. And, and some of the other projects, like I was, I just pulled it up here. You know, like the realignment of cut off road near Metro Drive, that was included in case somebody bought five properties and wanted to combine it and the road currently was cutting through there. You know, how likely that is, I don't know, but.
The original was taken out, wasn't it?
It, it, yeah, I mean.
It was as an alternate.
That was a second priority. And then si- same thing with like, uh, extending Pine Street south of Schofield Ave. It was initially a first priority, that became a second priority. But again, that was one where, you know, if that development never came to fruition, that street wouldn't have to be there. But if that project wasn't in the plan, we couldn't fund that project. So I don't know how to, how to word that where it doesn't sound a little off, but we don't know what the future is going to bring. And if we don't try to predict, then we're gonna miss it. And I, I guess I don't know how often we can amend the plan either, you know.
You amend the project plan, I believe, as many times as you want.
Okay.
You can't do, um, territory amendments.
You can't add any territory. You can't add, you can subtract. So wait, wait, wait a minute now. You, so you can change the project plan. And it's, uh, TID two, uh, TIF two is thirty-one, right? Ten years.
Yeah, they're both twenty, thirty-one.
Wow, I, I, I would have, I would have approached it differently then. I would have went after a, a, a few of them knowing that we could change it. So we were trying to, we were asking for the big ask to, to then be done. And I think that's what got confusing.
But the, I guess the problem is that there's timeframes that these amendments have to be adopted.
Yeah.
So like the boundary amendment.
With the boundary, the boundary, I mean, I, I think if that would have been clear with the Plan Commission, they would have definitely thrown that in there in the motion. And it wasn't. So the minute that motion got made, all of a sudden, the boundary was the big issue and now we're gonna lose a developer. In ten days, we fixed it.
Right.
But that night, it was like, oh my God, crisis. We just dropped a project. It wasn't true at all. And the verbiage and the talk back to some people, that was wrong to say that, totally wrong. Cause the Planning Commission, the Plan Commission even said after the vote, we would have never done that if we would have understood that. They said it.
Can I make a suggestion? Why doesn't the Planning Commission have a work session?
Work session?
And get, so that they can understand, cause I mean, the TIF is a complicated thing. And I guess you, you really gotta understand what the project is, what they're talking about. And I, I don't see any out out of this unless they un, can understand what the staff is talking about and what they're proposing. Because I would hate to see Schofield Avenue reconstruction or, or getting it up to grade, whatever, before this TIF is closed. It's good money, that's what it was meant for, to upgrade, to help development. And I guess the first step to me is that the Planning Committee needs a work session.
I, I'm gonna, I, 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 I agree in a sense what you're saying. But by saying it, I, I believe there's a, a sense that, that they are lesser than other Plan Commissions and I, I, or confused and I completely disagree.
They're not.
This is a, a, a vocal group of people that I, I would actually say that th- these are more engaged and, uh, educated than past Planning Commissions. And they are gonna ask questions. And if they don't agree with the questions, they're gonna s- slow it down or stop it.
That's.
Where in the past, I believe it's been majority run where just go. I'm not gonna use some of the words that people are using, but, uh, if it gets brought up, it's gonna be approved.
No, I can ask you, but I.
I see way more engagement with this group than I have in the past.
That's why I suggest a work session. They can talk it out, they can voice their opinion. You're not having audience chiming in. It is the commission that they are working it out. And if they got questions, frustrations, um, suggestions, that's where it should come out.
So when I ask the question though, Barb, when I ask the question, I understand what you're saying. But I don't think it's the commission. I, I'm sorry, I think that it could have been presented in a better format. And I, I think that the questions weren't unanswered. So when we had discussions in, in, in our committee, as, as well we did leading up to there on different things regarding the corridor plan that was, you know, prepared by our consultant, there was questions that were being, being raised and topics that were being discussed that never got addressed then. Except that when the plan came in to get it approved that night, people became uncomfortable with it because this expenditures weren't being presented in, in a way. If they would, if, if they would have said A, B, and C for this, I think that the staff, or if staff would have presented it that way, by the time it went to committee, it would have been reacted to differently than, than what the results were. I'm just saying, if it would have been more clear and exact and people were having their questions answered leading up to that, it would have been handled differently. That's how I view it. Now, i- it's just that I never saw anything as far as limits regarding developer grants.
That's what staff is gonna have to.
I feel like we're straying away from Mark's discussion here. Cause we were talking about projects, now we're talking about how to pursue towards the Plan Commission here.
Yep, I agree.
We can pull this back though.
Yep, I agree. Keith?
I just ask one more clarification here now. We had the question about the closure of the TID, our TID one, TID two. You said it would, it would result in a nine cent, uh.
Seven eight.
Or seven cent.
That's all.
Now, is that, is that, is that assuming we're not taking whatever additional revenue is gonna come back to the general fund to be used for other services or what?
So we are only allowed to take, increase our levy so much. The rest is, has to go away. So we are forced to decrease our levies sixty-seven thousand?
Okay, so.
No, we get to add sixty-seven thousand dollars onto our levy.
Right.
And that figure is assuming that we take the full allowable amount that we are allowed to increase. Yeah.
And it's preliminary, it will change.
Yeah.
All right, cause that, and then another question was also asked about TID one, and I guess that.
Let's go, let's, we're gonna talk about TIF again in the future. So let's work flat that way.
Okay.
The different movement of something else will be here.
Yes. Okay, I'll just skim over the CDA again, just basically pays, um, the ten.
Thank you, Ian.
No worries.
Um and then you see that. Transfer in there that is for the debt payment.
Okay, the Weston Aquatics Center, we had a great year.
That's all wet.
The weather was good and our partnership with the Y went really well. Um, we continue to budget forty thousand dollars coming from uh um the operating levy, so forty thousand from levy. And then we have forty thousand coming in through their room tax again. Um, for our conversation with the Y, we have budgeted a dollar wage increase for all employees. Anything else to add, Sean?
Um, the, I mean, she hit the, we we uh increased a dollar per employee, but we did reduce our. Water and our maintenance budget by around eleven thousand, so to make up to the ten thousand for budgeting for the additional expenses.
You know, so we had a good program and and we still do, but do you think joining with the Y has elevated the perception? I mean, you know what I mean? It's kind of like the grocery store and you put a pharmacy and a bank in, it elevates the the store. I mean, by having a Y associated, did that elevate?
I I think that most.
For me, it has.
I think most people that come to the pool don't know.
Don't even know, okay.
That don't don't know the Y is running it because I I've explained that to lots of people.
Is that something we should tell them in a sign? Should that be a sign out front saying partnering with the Y?
I mean, a lot of our signage is now swapped over, so it is both Weston logo and YMC logo. You know, even when I drafted the thank you to everybody for attending this year, you know, I wrote the partners, Weston Aquatics Center, YMC, and Weston Session. So all three entities that help operate that.
Thank you.
Or, you know, recognizes partners working to run that. And I mean, just to touch on it, even though, you know, Keith and I did meet with Brian, Stephanie, and Abby today for a twenty twenty-one wrap-up meeting and talk about twenty-two. Two thousand twenty-two season also, so I think everybody's in agreement, things went well. Um, you know, but we had a great year, revenue wise.
That's super.
So.
We haven't had a, we haven't had a black year in how many years?
Well, that's another story considering.
Come on.
You know, if you look at the budget, obviously, we don't offset revenues, our expenditures with revenues totally because there is some levy and there is room tax.
It's a service, you know, it's a service.
There's no way we we would have to charge a heck of a lot of money to actually have it finance itself.
Yes.
Well, that's.
And I don't think pools aren't money-making deals, it just don't.
Me? Just a quick question here. Um Sean, um with the one dollar raise to the um to the uh lifeguards, how are we compared to the other surrounding pools in the area? Are we pretty compatible?
We're 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 still low. I mean, we're still lower than Los American County pays theirs. Uh, we're just fortunate that, I mean, the staff was all explaining this year based on what happened with our twenty twenty season, that there was not gonna be an increase, so. I mean, we're we're, I mean, the increase we're going up to now is like eleven fifty an hour for a lifeguard. So we're still low compared to most. A lot of it's obviously the benefit of working a job where you can be outside.
Same, but if you know.
Uh, you know.
Water.
Yeah, you know, so I mean, that's something we talked about today too, is just, you know, it's the opportunity, the environment you're working in versus. You know, we don't wanna. You can't put ourselves out of business by paying them what other part-time jobs are right now, but.
How many employees, you know, how how many?
Uh, we did thirty-two.
Things don't work. Really?
We did thirty-two this past season.
Okay.
Uh, but we were very fortunate, we returned twenty-six. So, um and then our um front desk people are at eight seventy-five an hour, so. I mean, we're really low.
Do we do we throw a party or something for them at the end of the year?
Uh, I mean, they do have a.
You know.
They do have guard week that we can leave out.
What is it, a pizza party here?
You know.
A pizza party here.
I mean, we, well, we did incentives um.
Okay.
When we were operating it, um so but these are not our employee now, so that changes what we do, but then we do a guard week. Whereas we do different things for a week.
Okay.
And then they do kind of a a I call it pool party, but it's just really a night where the lifeguards get to enjoy the Aquatics Center with nobody else there, you know, so.
Okay.
Like I said, it's just about. Having a fun environment to work in too.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Oh, sure, I do. Okay. I'm just gonna add the pool is currently looking at potentially changing software. Um, and potentially like credit card processors, depending how that goes, so some of the loss in there might be offset. We currently pay quite a bit in credit card fees. Um, through OpenEdge, so if that changes, it'll look a little bit different.
Do you, does your department have something to do with that, hopefully?
I think Nate's currently looking into it. I think Sean's been investigating it.
Yeah, it's not it's not our software, yeah, cuz our software system right now requires that we use OpenEdge for credit card services. And their fees are astronomical.
The biggest thing with OpenEdge is they charge us twelve months out of the year.
Oh.
So right now, we're paying a lot.
And we're only using it for three months of the year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's a lot, four and a half percent or five percent or what?
Well, the transaction fees vary on the car too.
Yes, and this is a flat fee. It's about a hundred dollars a month, but we're not, nobody's using it, so.
But yeah, cuz we, I mean, our credit card fees were almost seven thousands here.
For three months?
Well, it's for a year, but yeah, literally, I'll I'll.
About two months.
Use it three months.
Yeah. So we charge people that come to the door a fee, but that fee. Obviously offsets some of the charges, but right now, just to have OpenEdge available, we get charged a fee and there's nobody coming using it, so.
Yeah, but if you're saying that's a hundred dollars a month, even if it's you're talking about nine hundred dollars for the year, that's that's. Non-productive at that point versus your overall expenditure was seven thousand. There, you know, I'm I'm, I know that there are probably other services.
Yes.
That are less.
But they don't work with booking.
Well, that that's the issue that you're dealing with, is that you're dealing with a software package that doesn't work with something else and so on and so forth. Um, you know, so that that's your controlling factor there. Not because there are other services I know that are less expensive.
Yeah, and we we understand that, but right now, our our software system is booking, that's what we use for memberships, we use it for point sale. Um, so less than registration, everything, so we're looking for a different vendor. You know, something that'll allow us to be flexible with who we work with on the on the credit side. You know, where booking, you're using OpenEdge.
Yep.
And that's.
That's their partner agreement also.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, we're definitely looking to change that. We talked about it today with the Y too. Um, and Nate's been looking at it for, since we started the season pretty much, so.
So room tax, we have um thirty thousand left over from that wayfinding sign project that was done. Um, so the room tax gets split with seventy percent to a tourism entity and then thirty percent the village keeps. And currently, forty thousand of that is allocated to the Weston Aquatics Center and then the rest we put to the capital improvement fund. Um, the budget is assuming that we're going to have a contract with the CBB in twenty twenty-two or another tourism entity if that is. Um, the route we choose. Revenues are starting to recover. Um, I looked, they're pretty close to like the twenty eighteen numbers. They're not as close as twenty or as high as twenty nineteen. Um, but I think we should be able to get. To that budgeted number and hopefully over. Questions on room tax? Lauren's making faces at it.
I'm sorry.
I make faces with just my eyes.
You can.
So we still old, I recall either meeting of Laura, probably where he, there was talk about paying our obligation to the CBB for twenty twenty, correct?
That's in a balance sheet account, so you're not gonna see it here. We expensed it last year.
As far as I'm concerned, if we don't have a con, if, and I know the question was, does it obligate us to continue the contract for twenty twenty-one or not? Is that too bad?
We severed it. We severed the contract in twenty-one.
Okay, so.
At the end of twenty, it was severed.
Right.
We we believe by the end of this year, we'll be in one, correct?
Okay.
Talking to Ian.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's the question again.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
And I wasn't making faces or eyes.
Well, this is our grant fund. Currently, all we have knows the budgeted revenues, so we'll be getting our second half of our our bill payment in twenty twenty-two. We'll have two point two.
Well, that's the market.
The miscellaneous revenue is the interest we are receiving.
Have we spent any of that money at all?
Nope.
Because something else, I mean, I know. There's other communities or.
Alabama's.
What are you supposed to spend on?
Alabama's building a prison.
Yeah. Can I ask a naive and really, uh, I I guess it's a really uh.
No question is.
This question, okay. Um, this money here while we're waiting, we can't put into some sort of like a money in a money market or anything, actually, can we?
It's a great question.
It's it is earning interest right now. It's just in our checking account.
Cuz I mean, we haven't had any plans in place. I'm not saying that we should do like invest, invested, but just kind of crazy thought throwing that out there, so.
Or money market or something.
Yeah, just so that we have higher interest, I don't know.
Just look some lines there.
Yeah.
There isn't any real higher interest.
Yeah.
I kind of see. I kind of figured, but you know, I'm just kind of.
You're 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 looking at yeah hundreds of a point difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only way you can make more money is if you fold it in half. Okay, just wanna make sure.
And to be honest, you you wanna make sure it's actually there when you want it.
Right. That's the protection.
By by taking a chance, it may, some of it may not be there anymore.
But we have an idea where this fund is going.
Uh, this, do we have an idea? We are gonna be bringing forth a great presentation in the future with um. Our thoughts of some examples and and that is just gonna be something to build on with thoughts from you guys, so. That meeting's not scheduled yet.
Are we going to seek public input? I mean, that's not a bad idea, just, but I know the public will come up with suggestions that you can't apply our but to.
The biggest thing, it can't be reoccurring, cuz obviously, if there are further discussion, we just don't have funds for anything recurring.
It's supposed to be like for one-time use or.
Can it be for water treatment?
It can be for water, sewer.
Infrastructure.
For water.
Infrastructure, broadband.
Not streets.
That was a broad up.
Not streets.
No.
There's funds.
We could use the revenue loss portion if we decided to go that route.
Right.
Is it, is there a concise list of what you can use it for? No, of course not.
You gotta shoot the dart.
There's like a very general broad list that they have.
What's that?
So you're gonna come.
It's setting up.
They're gonna, they're gonna seed us a little bit, yep.
Okay, a good idea.
But just where if you're going, they'll take, they'll take it away.
Well, it's.
No, no.
So they can dump it in, so if they can access our account like that, that.
They can't go the other way.
They can? Okay.
We have until something like that.
Okay.
We have until twenty twenty-four to commit the funds to something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then we have until twenty twenty-six to spend the funds.
Wow.
We could commit to something in twenty twenty-four and still be spending those funds through.
And it could change to some degree, right? I mean, right?
As far as what's committed.
No, I mean, the the, I mean, where we can spend it, that can change. Can can somebody make a.
They do not have the final.
Yeah.
Who does?
They did not.
Oh.
Issue the final interim.
A final interim.
Final, final interim form, there we go.
They weren't interim finals. As I know that.
Door is open but kind of closed.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Long.
That was a tough one.
These are the social civic trust and Parkland Trust. Um, the one on the left or the civic and social that includes the farmer's market. That's a great way for us to keep track of the fees that we charge for the farmer's market and reinvest into the farmer's market area. And then the one on the right um includes Parkland dedication fees and park donations.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Have we given out any scholarships recently?
No, because uh the interest is so low.
Okay, so we're actually using interest to give the scholarships, not the. That's that's kind of what it was set up to be.
Yeah.
Yep.
To use interest for, right?
Right.
Okay.
Is there, is there a a line item here for wages?
No.
Why not?
For a farmer's market?
Why wouldn't, yeah, well, I mean.
Or for which?
We're definitely working on it. Renee certainly is spending time there.
Um.
Why wouldn't we put no wages towards it?
Because we don't have enough revenues to really support that.
So maybe it shouldn't look that good.
The farmer's market um is projecting to look at eleven thousand dollars.
I know, but what if we're spending uh twenty-five percent of our time?
That's true. That's something we could look at.
You know, cuz I mean, I'd like to, I I Keith and I've had that conversation. I just, I know sometimes it's hard to identify. You know, how much are we spending at the kayak? You know, I mean, how how much are we doing labor there? We're kind of not. And I mean, I guess I never viewed this much uh of our time would be spent on that farmer's market and I I think we are spending a lot of time there. And you know, so I I think, you know, the most transparent way to look at it would be to have, you know, so we're moving some of our money around, which people don't understand with the Tiff and Tid. Is that we're gonna get all this mon- why would we keep on paying all this money? Wait a minute, it's actual people working here now that were just taking a percentage. You know, Keith is working a percentage here, Jen is working, you are X amount. It's not these ghost employees. But if we're spending time there, some of that portion of her wage and possibly others should be there too. I'm sure there's maintenance.
Or at least an administrative fee of some sort.
I mean, I I had a, I had a talk with Raleigh and I said, you know, when are you gonna ask for that back? He says, my thought is never. Um, I I want that there forever.
What, the piece of land?
Yep, he never wants it back. And I I I said, no, no, wait a minute, no, never or the next three years? And he said, never.
Let's see it in writing.
And he said, well, I know, but I've known Raleigh for a long time and he's never not done what he said he's gonna do. Then he actually said he's gonna, he bought that house and he's gonna tear that down and make that a parking lot to put the vendors back there. I know we've tried to do that. To have the the help even parked behind your buildings and they haven't because you can't get in it, period. But but that is still not a parking lot where he tore down the house. I mean, at least it all got done this year, but that was his intention. And I I just, every time I go by there, I mean, I don't know about the rest of you, that's something that we're doing good. That's a smile.
On Tuesdays.
People talk about it, everybody talks about it and, yeah, it's pretty neat.
Why why doesn't this stay in itself? I mean, isn't.
I don't know. I I just know that um Reds used to run the one for Wausau down at River Drive. And you couldn't get in there because it was run so uh uh tough. And I I just, sometimes I wonder our practices and our practices are left at at staff level and maybe that's not the staff, that way that we should be practicing how it's run. But cuz because there was a lot of negativity. I don't hear no negativity about ours, but back in the day when Reds used to run that one, you couldn't get in there. Unless you were there for, unless you were there forever.
Was it the higher vendor fees or what was it?
I know, it it's just uh. If you were down at uh River Drive and and you all of a sudden had beans. And uh there's three other people that have been there forever and they're gonna protect those three other bean growers. Sellers and two more people can't come in. It's just how it worked. It it was a real stinker. And and for what I do, we don't sell anybody produce to sell there. Uh, Lincoln County or here, so it's just, I don't think that's right. I think they should have to grow it themselves or drive down the.
So we used to have it here, didn't we?
Yep, yep, it was run by us too.
So we started it, but.
Yep.
How many years ago was that?
Long time.
Long time ago.
Yeah, long time.
Why why wouldn't we facilitate? I mean, I I'm just, I'm.
Yeah.
It's new to me. I mean, I go there once in a while, very seldom, but I do go there. We have big gardens ourselves, but I'm just curious on. Why the municipality would we.
Yeah.
Put money in there where everywhere else it seems to, it it seems to be a horrible people that facilitate.
Right.
Why would we wanna spend their energy?
We should probably explore that. Put that on your yellow pad there, Keith. Okay, yeah, another topic to come. Back on uh social. I jumped in here. Are we on Park Trust now? So anyway, I just think labor should be thrown there, okay.
How much are you thinking?
What?
How much are you thinking?
Well, I wanna know how much.
How many average, how many hours per week does somebody spend there?
I would bet if you um look at it, I bet it's twenty grand.
You can't make it lose money though, or else I'm gonna be trading some money from the general fund there.
But it is what it is.
Okay. I can tell.
So you're transferring it in wages or you're transferring it.
If if we're we're, we're popping eighty grand into the pool every year.
That's true.
So what's the difference?
Um, so currently right now, as it stands with it being um maybe seventeen thousand dollars as proposed there, what exactly does that go towards? You know, what is the, for the civic, um so for the uh. Farmer's market? I mean, is there actual expenses there? Uh, we're just kind of curious.
Improvement, so that number actually is gonna change because we just got some numbers cuz we actually improved some uh blocks this year.
Some what?
Some, what do you call it?
The like the stall numbers. The little concrete slots, I'd say what stall number you are.
I think.
Can I just, a very simple question and I, you already know cuz you're smiling. What started that? Who actually thought of it? Were the vendors all complaining that the lot numbers weren't nice enough?
No.
I think we.
Did we come up with it?
Used to have tempers. I mean.
I mean, for the time.
So, we were underwater, so we called in gravel.
Yeah, I mean, that was one thing we did.
I saw that too, and then I saw that structure put in the middle too, yep.
I think the rationale was that the vendors pay, like for a license to be there, so they should have, you know, somewhere nice, cause it's kind of like.
Yep. Okay.
They're.
Do we offer the electricity for those food trucks, or are those self-contained?
We provide electricity there.
Yep, so thirty amp, fifty amp?
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
So, uh, th- those are food trucks, those gotta be fifty amp, have to be.
And just a follow-up with that, um, we, uh, we, with the electricity that we provide there, is that installed there already?
Oh, yeah.
So we did pay for that as well.
Oh, yeah, that's fifty amp is big time, thirty amp is big time. So, you know, okay, let me just figure this out, okay, so. And I I don't even wanna go to the point that it's all cash. You know, is any of it going anywhere other than cash? And then you got food vendors coming here, which I know is fun, but then you've got four or five food establishments right there in that corner that are paying. Wages, taxes, you know, all kinds of stuff. And uh, boy, I tell you, when I was in the business, I did not like uh farmers markets, but you know, holy mackerel, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess going off that, has anybody have have, has anybody, I guess, surveyed the, are the food establishments there yet?
No, I mean, they're all licensed, you know, they're all very good ones, I mean, people love them. But any, I just, I wanna just make sure, you know, what 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 we're actually involved in, because. You know, it's gotta be for everybody, the whole community, you know.
I I guess I look at it like the four hundred block, for example, and there's food vendors and there's food restaurants anyway, as well, uh, as um around as well, and I don't have any. Specific concerns about, unless the um, you know, restaurants there like complain or express concerns, but that's just my thoughts specifically.
Well, it's, it's like Art and the Park, Art and the Park, I don't believe is run by Marathon County or by City of Wausau.
Oh, it's a separate organization.
It's a separate organization, that's my point.
Yeah.
So I, this should probably end up being pretty soon a separate organization.
Separate group.
Okay, the only thing I can tell you about Art and the Park is that I was involved with it for many, many years. Most of the the restaurants, et cetera, are businesses around the area.
Right, right.
Were glad when it was there, because their business went up more.
They couldn't take it.
Right, more that way than otherwise.
Well, that's why.
Art and the Park is huge, I mean, that's.
That's why Locree likes the farmers market there, because there's a lot of people will actually go to the restaurants and whatnot all there.
Oh, sure. Well, it it, I saw some emails and some, I saw some email and verbiage that you, when you can't find parking, then it gets uh frustrating. And that's why we were trying to push the local business people to park behind the buildings, not out in front, to 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 alleviate some of that strain.
Jen might have something to add. Unless she accidentally pressed, it said she raised her hand. Jen, do you have something to add on the farmers market?
I was just gonna explain that when it was originally created back in probably two thousand four, two thousand five. Cause I actually helped start it and then Renee took it over. Um, it was supposed to be set up so that it could be self-sustaining and run by the farmers, but that just never happened, so. And another thing with Raleigh and and I've talked to him before, they actually have something with the lease with with uh Building One, which is the one that has Fantastic Sam's in it. And Jimmy John's, they can't cover that, so they can never put a building on top of the farmers market site, so.
They can what?
What?
They can't, they can't put a building in, on top of the farmers market site because of the lease that they have. With the leases in that building, because it would cover their view to the intersection.
And and also the vision triangle, everything, yeah, okay. I mean, it's a huge deal, I mean, when you think about it, it should, it should bring customers to the other businesses.
He actually wanted to expand it at one time and put a, he wanted to use it for like craft vendors on Sundays, that's, that was what he wanted to do.
It'll be huge. But you know, so they all come with their uh trailers. And a lot of them leave out in the parking lot, but some I see now are putting them behind the buildings, which, anyway, enough said.
Oh.
Okay, good.
Okay.
If we do each of these, will you all terminate?
Park Trust?
Uh, the Park Trust uh just um has our Parkland dedications fees and also collects donations there.
Side issue with the, we have been talking about Parkland purchases and Parkland maintenance hasn't been worked out, we. Remember the.
The, um, we're still using the term program dedication ordinance, we are not, um, we need to move forward the park impact fee. Um, that would take place of the program dedication.
So it would take care of some of the expenses of maintaining the parks, not just building new ones?
Yeah, I believe it's the twenty percent maintenance, eighty percent, um, like new improvements.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what's proposed, that's, and there's requirements in the state. Um, you know, with park impact fee.
Okay, thank you.
You're working on it right now, Sean?
Yeah, we've had it, we've brought to, we've taken to committee a couple of months ago. We brought it to Plan Commission back in probably early, while Wally was still there. And the Plan Commission sent it back and wanted to divide the two fees together. Or two different fees off. Um, it's ready to go, but the TIF districts took precedence, so, um. It's just too much for, I think, the Plan Commission to to go back, we're gonna have to go back over and understand it again with everyone. Explain it, because it, many of them weren't even on the Plan Commission when we first started the project, so.
So when will that be brought to the planning?
Uh, we have to bring it back, we have to go back through it as staff, just to make sure it's in. A form where we can explain it to you guys.
Soon as it be November meeting, correct?
Well, we're tackling signs at this one, so, um, we can have it for November.
I just need my charger, since it's dying in eleven minutes.
Well, Michael. Somebody's like you. Everyone has his charger, you have any chargers standing?
Not tonight.
Okay.
When you run the screen, when it runs off your screen, it uses extra batteries.
Oh, imagine that.
Should we move on?
Yep.
Yes, please.
I told my wife six thirty, hell's on you today.
That service.
She says she had nine thirty.
That service fund is used to account for the accumulation of resources, you know, for payment of geo bonds. And general, general application notes and for revenue bonds issued by the TIF districts. Here's a summary of our outstanding issues right now, we have a two thousand nineteen Geo note, original issue was five point three million. Twenty twenty B Geo bonds, which was five point three million. That's it, so, so heads up, notes is ten years, bonds are twenty. So the twenty twenty C Geo note of two point one. And then the twenty twenty D is our Geo banknote from inner city for two point nine. Yeah.
I'm moving.
Do you wanna move here, Jenna?
Could do that, sure. Technological difficulty.
So we only have two CDA revenue bonds left, um, the two thousand four B, um, it's a one point eight million dollar issue. And that matures in twenty twenty five, and then the two thousand nineteen CDA issue, which the original issue was nineteen point two million dollars. It matures in twenty twenty nine.
Do we got everything?
I think so, we're playing musical chairs.
Oh, that was quite a production.
Somebody stop the music.
So currently for our twenty twenty two budget, we are anticipating. Paying off part of our twenty twenty D note. Um, the goal is to keep the property tax levy where it is, at one point four eight. Um, so what we did was we put all the required payments in and then whatever we needed to get the bottom line where it's supposed to be. We plugged the difference in for the twenty twenty D. That issue from inner city is one that's gonna be refunded once we fund, uh, take out the bond for our new municipal building. Um, so every amount that we pay off prior to refunding, all the better. Um, the, there is a balance at the end of the twenty twenty two year and that is required to stay in there, that's a hundred and seven thousand six nineteen. And that is because when we issued our twenty twenty debt, we received a ton of premium money. And what that means was they paid more for our bonds than what we were asking. Uh, but they required us to take that money, put it in the bank and use it to pay for the interest. So when you look at the debt schedule, the interest rates like that we are paying for this year and next year, they're really high. Like, they're like four percent, but the reason why they have them so high is because they gave us this premium money that we need to give back to them. So that was, that's how the, they justified the higher interest rates.
Sounds like a shell game, I mean.
It is a shell game.
And bakers, the baker stuff.
The purpose of it is when you issuing the bonds accordingly, they pay that premium price, you turn around, it's a credit back to them. And therefore, uh, when they look at the bond prices in the market, it looks better than what it really is.
Uh-huh.
So, and twenty twenty three, we anticipate um issuing our Geo bond. For our municipal center. I did not have any estimates, cause I'm not sure when that's coming in, if it's gonna come in end of next year or waiting to the following year. As I said before, we're watching interest rates really closely. Um, if we need to just split the building apart, so we can do part of it for a twenty year and part for a ten. Because it's advantageous interest-wise, that's something that we're gonna do, but right now I did not budget for any future payments for um new debt.
I think we talked about that at one of our meetings.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, remember, right?
Yeah.
We're gonna check into that.
Yep, so, this is the type of debt, so we have tax-funded Geo debt, we have utility-funded Geo debt. And then the revenue bonds, water, sewer, which was paid off this year, stormwater, and then the CDA TIF revenue. Those are the balances as of the end of twenty twenty and the end of twenty twenty one. Next one. Uh, this is talked about a lot, the village's legal debt limit, um. Right now, our estimated equalized value is one point four million dollars. Wisconsin State statute debt limit is seventy million dollars, we are at thirteen point two. So we are well within our legal debt limit.
And we have been higher in the past. Yes.
It was just one period of time, that we.
We're way high one time.
Wrong, wrong time.
That was back in two thousand five, I think. Okay, next one.
Alright.
Uh, this is just a quick summary of the debt issues funded by levy. Next one. Uh, this is the debt funded by increment, you can see the two thousand and four B, that's what's left for TIF two. And then the bottom is the TIF one at fourteen point six million dollars.
So in order to pay off that one, you'd have to pay, was it, uh, six hundred some, six hundred and thirteen thousand or something? No, seven hundred and thirteen.
So, at this point, the twenty, two thousand four B is callable, so if. We get the convene the CDA committee together and they say payoff that two thousand four B, we could do that tomorrow. Um, the two thousand seventeen A, um, that is not callable till twenty twenty five, so. If we decided, say, we had enough money and we wanted to close the TIF tomorrow, we need, would need to put all those funds into a trust, because we couldn't call the bonds tomorrow. So, that's not callable till twenty twenty five. Next. And these are the debt issues funded by utilities. Includes um the most recent twenty twenty B, um, Geo bonds, and it also includes the twenty nineteen A Geo notes.
Good.
I have, I have a question for, for Michael. Are you predicting that we'll have enough in revenue to pay these debts, or are you anticipating uh rate increases? I know it it's been in the past where we've had these long stretches between rate increases and then. The uses of the system whole, the schmucks, it went up so much, and then the recommended, as we recall from the Public Service Commission, was to have. More frequent, smaller increases, is that the plan, or are we just gonna jump on this in ten years and freak people out because of the increases?
Yeah, no, I I know one thing we're probably gonna talk about with the utility budgets is, um, we have discussed like a simplified rate case for the water utility, um, is coming here. And um, possibly something maybe small for the sewer utility as well. Um, we do also have fund balance in the utilities, so I don't know, that's one other topic we're going to bring up, um. Moving forward here was maybe looking at what is our fund balance policy, you know, what.
Isn't the River Mountain Metro Sanitary District coming with some charges that they're gonna stick on our sewer fees?
Yeah, and they gave us their proposed budget for this coming year, um. At the same time, right now, this year, we're about a hundred thousand dollars less than we were last year. So, um, I don't know if that's, you know, our total water pumped seems to be about the same as it was last year, so I would think the same on a sewer is flowing over there. Um, you know, we have been sealing manholes.
Just say less infiltrate.
Yeah, so I don't know if we found that much infiltration over the last year or two, but uh, I think that'd be.
Okay.
Tough to say, but um.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Yep, let me go back to the one where it shows the total outstanding debt, um, that does include our CIP as well too, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just, just wanna be sure, um, you know, I I was just kinda curious, okay.
Utilities. Next one. Michael.
Um, yeah, I guess, you know, water utility, why is, you know, we're projected revenue about the same as last year? And expenses, um. I guess, not last year, but uh, you don't have a twenty twenty number on that.
No.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I guess, you know, we're estimating this year to have a slight net income, about a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Um, next year, potentially looking at having a, a deficit, um. You know, this year we thought we would be right about breaking even, uh, next year it looks like we might be. Um, slipping a little bit into a negative, which is why we'll be looking at the simplified rate increase, so. Just a, a small bump, um, every several years, just so we keep up with it and we don't have, um, large.
Sticker shot.
Yeah.
And I, I recall that I attended that PSC hearing and and that was one of the recommendations that they got, smaller, more frequent increases.
Yeah, and with our last rate increase that took place in uh twenty twenty, it was the step two.
January of twenty twenty.
Yeah, it was at the step two, um, and the rule was you can't implement a, a new simplified rate case until you've had the current. Rates in place for at least one, one year, so, um, this January would be kind of our, the first chance we'd have to implement a, a simplified rate case.
And tho- do those have to be taken in from the PSC again, or?
Not the, um, the simplified one, if you're just asking for the, the small amount, you can do that as long as it's within. I think five years of your last full rate case.
What, what is this, what's the percentage?
It doesn't need a what.
What, what is, what, could that increase be?
Simplified, five percent.
With auto-stick?
Yeah, probably about, you know, two to three percent.
Okay.
Still cheaper than the oil.
Yeah.
So, I I mean, and I know Shane talked about some things, but for barrel is double. I mean, are you, was, was that you, right?
Or repair. Barrel rates are still pretty low, you're relative to other retailers.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, cause I just, I just thought barrel was a double, anyway. Okay.
Stop watering the hole.
It's a bomb, yeah.
So if, if we don't request a, a rate increase, even the simple one, it just sits there.
Right.
Correct, our rate is just the same.
And you lose, you lose out.
Yeah.
The simple rate allows us to get somewhat close to the, you know, price increases, et cetera.
Increases, yeah.
As well as the fact that it will allow us to potentially. At least keep up with what's, what's happening, I guess, as well.
Maybe I wasn't paying attention, so we are doing the simple. Every chance, every chance, yeah, but every chance we have, okay, good.
We'll be looking at doing one next month.
Right.
Yeah, I think we'd be remiss if we did.
Well, two to three percent, I mean, you know, wages, you know, okay, good, thank you.
Doesn't it also provide for, I, I know there was a problem with depreciation, we had depreciation in utilities, is that still being done or has that gone away?
No, we still come from depreciation.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, the, like the sewer utilities up here, you know, the estimate for twenty twenty one is six hundred ninety thousand dollars in depreciation.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, but again, you know, sewer utility is similar to the water utility, um. Starting off the year of the budget, we're looking. Uh starting off the year, the budget, we're looking at being what a hundred twenty thousand dollars, so in the in the red, on the negative. We're estimating will be about eighty thousand dollars positive. Uh a big part of that, as I said, was um our O and M fees to Ramon Metro are less than what we're, we thought they were going to be to start the year. So um that was the other way around, we'd be looking at being slightly negative there with sewer. And then looking at twenty twenty two, um again, Ramon Metro is looking at some potential rate increases. Um they, I believe they said they'd be temporary until they can recover costs from the our sewer users uh for projects that they're having to undertake. Um so hopefully that would be recovered. But other otherwise, you know, we kind of plan for, you know, so many main breaks, service breaks, things like that that occur throughout the year, so then when those don't happen, you know, we don't, we don't have those expenses, but we, you know, I guess the law of averages, we figure we're going to have some every year, so. Stormwater utility, um you know, I think that hasn't had uh again, any rate changes probably for the past six years. And we went from forty eight dollars a year to fifty dollars a year for an ERU, our equivalent runoff unit. Uh we do have the uh the phosphorus study, the total maximum daily load for the Wisconsin um River Valley here. The preliminary findings are that we currently do not meet our phosphorus removal that the DNR is requiring. So we'll be having to look at implementing a program to increase our phosphorus removal from our stormwater systems moving forward here.
Bye.
So so the requirement is sixty eight percent, I think we're at fifty fifty eight percent currently, so every every time you uh our stormwater discharge permit gets renewed, which I believe is every three years, uh we have to show that we're making progress toward, you know, at least a ten percent improvement to our system or working towards that improvement, so.
So how much have accomplished?
So.
Quick short version.
Um so it'd be taking areas that currently are just piped directly to the river and, you know, putting some kind of pond, you know, intercepting it somewhere, putting a pond in uh for a treatment or taking a current curb and gutter section and maybe making it a ditched roadway so that there's filtration of the stormwater before it gets into the sewers.
It's the reason why we're not doing curb and gutter anymore.
Or. Yeah, and that's a big reason is the, you you can't backslide on a project, so if you cur- if we currently don't have curb and gutter on a street, um it's kind of hard to put in full blown curb and gutter, cuz you you have to make up for that stormwater treatment somehow. So.
So do you, do you ever predict, I know you can't, you don't have a crystal ball, that uh the the DNR is gonna force us to treat our stormwater runoff?
Well, I mean, that's essentially what they're requiring is that we.
I mean, like run it through a plant.
I don't foresee that.
Okay.
And I think.
Almost almost impossible, with all all forms of runoff, right?
Yeah, with some discharge points. Yeah.
And.
Try to do that in Milwaukee, it doesn't work there either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, especially if you have people that put fertilizer on their lawn, there's a bunch of runoff from there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not someone like you.
Yeah.
But ju- just real quick here, you know, so the estimated loss of twenty twenty one is that, and the estimated net income of twenty two. Do you remember what we estimated um income or a a loss of last year? That now may be the result of the three thousand forty, I'm just, I know it's weatherman stuff, I know it's crystal ball stuff, but I'm just wondering, do we keep track of that? Does it see how close we come in?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's like a salt projector, or if you don't have it, you don't have it, I just wondered.
I mean, so a lot of this is just our our street sweeping expenses, um you know, how much, how much it rains doesn't necessarily impact.
Right.
You know, everybody pays a fat, a flat fee based on just how much rough area, if you're a resident, you pay your residential.
In permeable surface.
Yeah, um so sometimes it's, you know, we had thirty inlets fail one year maybe versus twenty inlets that failed or, you know, a really big culvert or so, a small culvert, so.
Right.
Twenty twenty had a loss of twenty two thousand.
Twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay, so.
A holdup.
Yeah.
But what did we estimate in twenty twenty for twenty one?
Was the prediction?
Uh.
The budget was twenty thousand of income.
Oh, okay.
So, you know.
Yeah, that's close. I mean, in the scheme of things, that's seventeen thousand dollars swing.
Yeah.
It's not bad, okay. You could probably be a darn good weatherman. You're half right, you get a full set rate, what the heck?
And if you're half wrong, you're getting one anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, half right, you get a full set.
You're a carlin. It'd be fifty.
Long though.
Yeah. So we have our capital project funds in here. Um we have four capital project funds that we regularly use, so we have the one for TIF district one projects. Um then we have a fund for facilities, streets and equipment. Um and the utility capital items are kept track of within the utilities, so those are not included in the CIP.
So there's two different things, there's the capital improvements fund, so we're talking about the funds. There's also a capital improvements plan. So we need to kind of, I wanna explain the difference, so these are the funds and this is what's gonna be paid from, whether it's debt that's paid back by the levy or it's levy going in to fund this stuff or other revenues. The the plan that we normally talk about includes the water utility, sewer utility, storm water, and it also includes the debt that's being borrowed and paid back by those revenues, but and it includes the general fund. So right now, we're only talking about projects in there that will be paid by whether it's general obligation funded by the tax levy or other revenues, so there's no utilities in here. Just wanna clarify, in a couple, in one month, we're hoping at the November meeting, we will be talking about the capital improvement plan. We need to um get confirmation that the plan that was approved last year is still the plan that we want to move forward with. I did not wanna bring it here because I didn't know what. A lot of conversation, I think, right now, we just need to focus on the current projects that are are that are still in progress. Uh except for the TIF, the TIF, we have a couple of projects that we are anticipating. Obviously, they're not vetted by the board, but we're putting them in there cuz I kind of needed an estimate of what I needed to transfer out of TIF one. So that's where you're seeing, these projects are the ones, they're not vetted, they were talked about before, but these are the ones being proposed. Go on.
Give me a talk of them.
Do you have anything to say about them?
Yeah, I guess, well, one is the Schofield Ave and Ryan Street intersection, so some of the, a lot of the new housing that's gone in over there and then just the use of um that intersection for the business park. You know, I know we've talked about in the past, you know, should we be putting signal lights there, should we be doing something different at that intersection? Um so my my proposal was to, I guess, have create, get a formal study done of that intersection this coming year. Um just so we know what what is the recommended um future of that intersection itself. Um Community Center Drive, um Zinzer Street and Stoneridge Drive would be similar, you know, just repaving projects, um to what uh like Westview Boulevard and Barbicon uh were this year. Um these are streets completely in the um TID one, where, you know, there's sections of curb and gutter um and pavement that are, I guess, near the end of their lifetime, they're failed. Um and just trying to redo those, um you know, since they're in the TIF district with the the TIF funds. Um Stoneridge Drive uh would be just the section from Westview Boulevard uh going then north to um is that Ministry Parkway, uh Cranberry, kind of past the Fearfield in there.
Any thoughts on Mesker and Schofield?
For lights?
Just anything for, I mean, I'm I'm hearing a lot.
Yeah, I I we we could do that, um.
Yeah.
As kind of a, you know, even parallel, you know, we could add other intersections on with this, so you know, just looking at Schofield Ave as a whole and moving east here if there's other spots. Is Mesker technically within half a mile of the TIF one?
Yeah, well, and it it got, I mean, what uh no, it was the other one that got um used more when Schofield was closed, you know, than it just Fuller.
Fuller?
Fuller, I mean, it became very busy, but Mesker was a cheater.
Yep.
And I was one of them, and he just, he was a real thinker, you know, to try to get out sometimes when people are all going to work or coming home, and and I know it was a anomaly, but just a thought.
Yeah. Yeah, in the Schofield Ave corridor plan that we had, it did show kind of Fuller Street, um especially if we end up realigning it potentially in the future with old Costa, that that would be um probably a a signalized.
But, so Ryan, if if is that coming, are we thinking that or residents? Because the residents in that little quadrant are complaining enough that Jordan's whole group goes south and then jumps on Weston.
Yeah, so so a lot of the feedback I get, um is from people who maybe are trying to take their kids to school in the morning. You know, they kind of cut through the the backside there, um you know, coming down Ryan Street from Weston Avenue and they're trying to get to the middle school, um or coming back. You know, at the end of the day, it seems like there's, there's queuing that occurs on Scho- on Ryan Street in particular because you can't turn onto Schofield Ave.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, deal at those, the schools there, was there in the morning and they went, yeah, yeah.
Just to see what it's like.
It's it's a mess, but it's not our problem.
Well, but it's a mess down by the the main entrance too.
Right.
I mean, they're they're backed up almost a clutch sometimes because they wanna pick their kid up versus using a bus. But I I had some residents call me on Callan and saying that nobody, they're not supposed to use this. Well, we talked to the chief, I think Keith did, and there there's nothing that was ever said that Callan can't be used because the buses are starting to use that just to have some uh some options.
When it was proposed, putting that drive that driveway out, that was the whole thing was that it would be used by staff, not by buses.
Oh, okay.
And while the other.
We we couldn't find nothing, you know.
Yeah, that was big thing.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you know, the whole thing changed, you know, with the, how the buses work now and how they use that as a, I mean, all the buses connect there, it seems like, you know. I I think the Weston one is phenomenal, I I just.
They they lead it up really really well, the Weston.
That that is, that has worked out.
Buses don't interfere with the cars.
All that, all that safety issues on Camp Phillips, what, it just makes me feel good when I don't see kids there, you know.
Okay, Michael, do you know what's traffic count in Schofield?
I would imagine it depends.
Yeah, give me two minutes, I can figure it out.
Two, two or four.
Go on to facilities.
Hold me, I I have a question, what what is the Zinzer one, what is?
That'd be um from Schofield Ave down to the highway, um so in the in the business park there, repaving that road.
Instead of cul-de-sac, yeah, that's really rough. But it's a cul-de-sac and it's a primary for uh Bud uh Budweiser.
Yeah.
And that uh yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's one of the mains, you know.
Heavy Budweiser, yeah.
It's one of the few streets in the business park that comes out to Schofield Ave.
Yeah, yeah, it does, that's right, right by Sutton, you're right.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so go on to facilities.
Some halls.
Um the municipal facility is in there for the new building for twenty twenty two. And then again, like Jessica said, we're planning on having a meeting in November to discuss more for other things that could potentially be in here. So more to come on that, just kind of keeping it simple for budget for the time being. And then streets, again, nothing in there yet. Um so probably look at amending that later once we know what's going in there um based on discussions on the plan.
Are we gonna take a breather after Crestwood? Or you wanna tackle another one?
As far as neighborhoods go, uh so next year, next year, we have Berth.
I said it, but it 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 is quite trying.
Oh, yeah, um next year, we have Berth Street between Crosspoint and Shore, then we'll have the Apache Lane project too. And then, well Shane, to answer your question, the um most recent traffic counts on Schofield Ave are uh eight thousand five hundred just west of Ryan Street and then uh six thousand two hundred kind of over by the middle school by Enterprise Way there.
What year is it for?
Uh the one on the east side is from twenty nineteen, and then the one by Ryan Street is also a twenty nineteen.
Like, you're specifically asking out there?
Hasn't changed much.
Out there?
Oh, it hasn't, right?
It hasn't changed much.
All right, twenty four period? Correct, yeah, it's a day, average, really.
Average, per day.
Yeah, yeah, the forecast was nine thousand, but hasn't reached the nine thousand yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, you know, that's two years ago, maybe.
And that was before a great job of the parents were dropping their kids off in their cars.
Also probably Forest Roderick finished all their apartments too.
Right, it was quite amazing that the the persons I had contacted with the figures that the village saw the problem, it's actually all inside the school grounds property, all the problem is there.
Well, except when they stack up the clocks, yeah.
Well, and the road's actually long enough, they could stack up pretty far.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's just kind of wild to see.
It is, it's weird.
Coming along.
Yeah, it's it's just a weird look, you, I look at it, I go, whoa, what's going on here?
Yeah, a mile that I was on my motorcycle, so I could check, it's a quarter mile this way and a quarter mile that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh.
Or do you want it?
I'll take it, so the next one is the equipment, so what we actually have in here is the property tax levy of ninety three thousand and then the expenditure restraint program of fifty four thousand and then we estimate the equipment rental, which is funds that this, the equipment fund receives from the recycling fund. So when we go through our, when we have our yard waste and when we have leaf pickup, those activities are eligible for the recycling grant. And for part of the grant, what we do is we determine how the cost of the equipment used for those activities, so we can claim that on the grant and the revenue for that goes to the capital equipment funds to help fund future equipment for that. And then the only expenditures we have budgeted in there currently are approximately ninety one thousand dollars for Everest Metro and then approximately two fifty for Safer. Um as I we said before, this one will be um brought back so we can add additional items and finalize the numbers in here. Do we want a break? Cuz I really want everyone to pay attention.
Well, that paints a pretty bleak picture. That looks like my.
Can I go to the restroom, but I should probably go on that.
Okay, so revenues, um as you can see by the picture, they're drying up. So this was our twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. And as you can see, we were able to levy three hundred and fifty seven thousand nine fifty six, so we increased our levy three hundred and fifty seven thousand.
Cool.
Um at this point, if you can see the blue dot, so the the difference between our debt service exemption that was claimed on our levy sheet and the amount of money that we put in debt service, there was still difference of a hundred and eleven thousand. Moving on to this year. Um look at those two lines, there's nothing left. So what we did was we used that a hundred and eleven thousand dollars to enable us to increase our levy by that, giving us a total of a hundred and thirty four thousand four ninety seven. If we wouldn't have had that a hundred and one thousand last year, we could have increased our levy twenty three thousand. So that that's some kind of eye opening. Um as of right now, the current requests exceed revenues. Um we're not talking about expenditures tonight, what I wanna focus on is revenues. But I'm trying to show you where the problem is and it all has to do with our state levy limit calculation. Moving on to next year, so next year, if we are anticipating a net new construction of point eight two again, we will be able to increase our levy fifty eight thousand nine seventy four. That's a point seven percent increase in expenditures. We have not achieved a point seven percent increase in expenditures for a long time, we've been averaging. We have not achieved a point seven percent increase in expenditures for a long time. We've been averaging around two to three for like the past five years. So obviously, that is not doable, that's not something we can really operate with. So, next slide. Now what, what are our options? Next slide. There's a ton of options out there and everything that we are presenting tonight is not a long term answer. It's not a sustainable answer where, okay, you're gonna pick this and we don't have to worry about it again. This is gonna be coming up every year. Um, next slide. So our first option is street maintenance. Currently, there is five hundred thousand dollars of street ma- maintenance in the general fund yet. These funds are usually used for chip seal, crack seal and street overlays. We have in the past already started moving some of these expenditures into CIP. By doing it, moving it to CIP, we're borrowing for it. That just doesn't mean we're moving expenditures. We are able to borrow and increase our levy to pay for that work to be done. The goal, the recommendation is to move approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year. So what that gives us is on top of the CIP or the net new construction, which we're estimating fifty eight thousand dollars next year, we could increase our expenditures by a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. And that's that's what it gives us, but that's still not even close to what we've been doing in the past. In the past, we've been closer to two hundred thousand. So it's it's really, it's not gonna allow us to continue operating the way we have been. Um, and this option will dry up in five years because there's five hundred thousand dollars in there and if you move a hundred thousand a year, that's only five hundred thousand. And what you're doing is borrowing, so every year we will be borrowing a hundred thousand dollars more for our street maintenance. Next slide.
That's really your maintenance expense.
It is a maintenance expense and that's why we didn't do it in the past, but as you will see in our presentation, there aren't much for options. I mean, next one. Increase our revenues. Increase joint levy for, increase levy for our joint fire EMS district. Um, currently, we are working with Wisconsin D O R on this. Um, we've been working for almost a month.
I just got an email from Share, they're asking for the expenses associated. They asked for all of our contracts for Safer.
Oh, you did?
They're making us subtract out all of the other fire contracts um from the amount that's assessed. So we can increase by the amount that's assessed as long as it's less than two percent plus CPI, which is what it's supposed to be, but they're making it more complicated currently, so we're trying to work through that and figure out what needs to be done to claim it and if we can and how much we can claim.
So state statutes allow us to claim a dollar amount on the levy limit worksheet. Two percent plus CPI of the assessment of the fire district. So our goal contacting the D O Rs, what's the assessment? What does it include? Cause we thought, well, the amount that we have to pay, well, does it include their capital? So does it include the big fire truck that we're gonna be buying next year or not? What does it include? And we didn't get an answer.
Yeah.
We we got a lot of back and forth, talking to Greg, uh yes?
So, got from your comments, it sounds like they may want to deduct revenue that Safer makes from them?
Which would make sense, but then they also said, well, they want to ex- also subtract all the expenditures
Associated with contracts.
Associated. So I told Jenna, I'm like, well, the revenue should equal the expenditures associated with that contract.
Right.
Yeah, and they're not taking it. They said that.
They're not taking it, no.
They want an exact like calculation of what that is. They're making it very complicated.
But in the statutes, it's based off budget, so I they're taking all these actual numbers, trying to convert them, but
Yeah.
A little budget.
it's off a budget, so I'm not sure what they're doing.
They're probably not sure what they're doing.
They're not. So talking to Greg from others, he said that there has been a ton of issues with the D O R because they're interpreting different. So we're working with Andrea and if we get somebody else to actually that that pulls our levy limit worksheet and decides that they don't agree with what we did, we could end up getting rejected anyway. I mean, we'd have to fight because we've been working with somebody to get this approved. But the way that Greg was saying that it's just a very difficult line to claim because the D O R is not all on the same ball. So he also said if anyone is willing to sue the D O R on this, the league is looking for volunteers, so we'll see where we end up because we better get it.
You want to get on the good side of that organization, right?
Well, we already sued the D O R and we won, right?
Right.
So we might want to do it again.
Already on the bad list, what what what?
We really need this. Currently, the request for Safer is approximately seventy thousand dollars. We need it this year. We need to be able to levy that additional seventy thousand on a special line. So we're working really hard for that. Other revenues that we thought of brainstorming, um transportation utility. Um, we had it once before, it's not popular. But that was our brainstorming. Maximize P card rebate, that was, so
Purchasing card?
Purchasing card, credit card for um employees of the village use credit cards to purchase some items. We don't use them a ton. But every time we do use it, we get a rebate and
What percent?
That's what I was just gonna like just asked earlier. We just got a new contract. We're on the same contract that the state is on um with U S Bank. I can look it up.
And and they they allow you to use the credit card and they don't charge you a fee?
Some don't.
Really?
No.
But like, are we talking two percent, you know, in that range?
I think it might be in that range. There's different things. It depends like how quickly you turn around and pay it and then there's also like a quarterly rebate.
I like that.
Developed.
Well, like, our credit card is that one. I mean, I I can't believe that they pay us.
But anyway, Jenna was researching, I think it was Sun Prairie, they got like ninety thousand dollars from their credit card fees. So that's
Who said this?
On Sun Prairie.
Oh. Wow.
So there are municipalities out there that have used that as a source of revenue. It's just another brainstorm idea.
Yeah.
So licenses, permits, increase that, user fees, um wheel tax. We have very limited opportunities of those options that I gave you. Um, most of them won't produce a significant amount and they're not sustainable, like they're not gonna increase every year.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yep, uh just from what I hear from the plan commission, they have a real hard permit, increasing permits fees and they don't like the permits that we charge for as it is.
Yeah.
Just as a
E.
Uh, so just to clarify, the wheel fee, um it's it's it can only be used towards um street maintenance, if I recall correct, because, okay, just want to clarify that.
So if we did a wheel tax, it would be on top of what you approved at the Marathon County Board?
Yes.
You you're the one.
I I wasn't aware of when you
I I I couldn't help it. I couldn't help it. I just thought, you know, I gotta throw it over here. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, the former.
You want to increase in your registration fees?
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Have a hybrid card and have a small car, you pay seventy five dollars a year.
If we want to have an issue with where the registry, you know, with municipality, put a wheel tax on and they'll be doing Schofield every day.
Yeah.
We will all of a sudden will miss out on all that.
That's where we would lose revenue.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean, yeah. Michael?
Yeah, we we did look at that several years ago.
I started the project.
Yeah, um
On what?
I I'm looking at the wheel tax and all the vehicles in the Village of Weston um are labeled as being in the Village of Weston, so.
Right, and and Barb brought it up. So what, do we have an estimate on what we're talking about? If we did a big education piece on that, no?
No, I mean, the D M V gave us their Excel spreadsheet essentially and said
Right, theirs are huge.
here you go, figure it out, and then in talking to them, it was, so if we, if we figure this out,
Oh.
It changes every day.
will you then switch it? And they said, well, if we have somebody on staff who has the time to change all these, maybe we'll switch it.
Yeah, but but would it be that or just, would it be easier just to re-educate and and just ask everyone to do that? I mean, there's some, I know somebody that would go through all that reams and reams of paper.
Yes.
I did it two months already and
Yeah.
I found out as I was working through it, it changes every day because more cars are registered every day.
Right, right.
Right.
And
And I found there was places and there were, had city of Wausau mailing addresses.
What are we talking, yeah, if you read, what is the difference if it's between the municipalities? It's the same registration fee.
But if we had a wheel tax, it would be a separate Village of Weston.
Wheel tax.
It would come back and look, yeah, we can't do wheel tax.
Yes.
Not gonna happen, so. I I I I meant what Barb was saying, that you you just use the other municipality instead of Weston.
I just want to add as
Is that some money?
I I just want to add as well that there, um I know that uh City of Wausau Mayor Robert Milken before requested from the county board to see if the money, the money that was collected from the county uh could be distributed municipalities. And our uh the and from my understanding, our Corporation Council for the county said that the wheel, the wheel fees cannot be distributed, it can only be used towards that municipality specifically. So if the county is collecting that twenty dollars, then it can only go to the county, they cannot split it with any other municipalities.
No, because the proposal was that maybe, like say, the Village of Weston add five dollars onto the county's wheel tax and then we would get that back, but it can't be done.
Oh, okay, interesting.
The county would have spent it.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
So the P card is, there's a couple of components, but the basic one, it's a hundred and thirty five basis points. Do you think, is that one point three five percent?
Yes.
Is that, okay, thank you. Um, and then we also get a prompt payment incentive. We're currently set up on auto pay uh the day after our statement, so we'll get um forty four basis points on that as well. So it'll end up pretty close, yeah.
One three quarter percent.
Okay.
So if we exceed the revenue of the expenditure limit, we lose the res- expenditure restraint money again.
So at this point, moving forward, I don't know if we will be in that situation because we can't raise our revenues to pay for anymore.
Okay.
It, so if we were to get a huge grant in our general fund and we spent a ton, we could move out of that expenditure restraint program. But at this point, I'm talking to you because I can't increase my expenditures because I don't have any revenue to increase them. So that's where we're we're struggling there. We got lots of requests and I have no money. Okay, next one. Close Tiff one, so this is brainstorming. Currently, the amount of Tiff one is more than the assets and funds, so it can't be closed. But um when the approved Weston Avenue project is completed, the board should consider closing it. By closing the Tiff, we'll add approximately two hundred thousand dollars to the levy. So additional two hundred thousand. Um, at this time, we're exploring possibilities of closing it in phases as would be appreciated by our other taxing jurisdiction.
Right, because they have a hard time dealing with that influx of funds.
Is school, is the is the two hundred our portion?
Yes.
So the numbers I've seen uh being about six seventy five or seven hundred thousand back to the levy, that's everybody's portion.
No.
No?
So that's ours, um and then we have I think like two to three hundred thousand in admin fees annually, so those would come back, like your wages and other expenses that the Tiff is covering.
Right, right. Okay, okay.
So
Okay.
Yeah, will depend what route we go.
Okay.
Yeah, now that dollar amount is beginning to be coming back on the general fund.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And one of part of the strategies, we don't want all at once either because what you see, people see, oh, there's a huge chunk of money. What they're gonna do is take that, put it towards something that's operating, reoccurring, and it's gonna be put towards something that's gonna need an additional three percent every year. But I'm not gonna be able to cover those additional needed funds by the net new construction on two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So that is the big thing, the reoccurring expenses that are requiring an ongoing increase, but my net new construction is under one percent. And even though, say, the state changes their laws and say, hey, you can increase your levy by CPI. CPI say three percent. If you look at our total revenues, taxes isn't a hundred percent, so even though I can raise my taxes three percent, my total revenues are not gonna be going up three percent. Uh, most of our state aids and our other revenues are pretty stagnant. We don't get great fluctuations in our permits or our licenses. I mean, nothing that I can really count on and say, yay, I'm gonna have an increase in these revenues this year to help offset the increase in the expenditures. That's just not something that we see every year. Okay, next one. Uh, lobby for change. Municipalities need to increase the levy to keep pace with CPI. Currently, the league is doing this, they need our support. Keith and I joined the lobby team that one year and so we went and we talked to our lawmakers, Petrowski in particular, Bureau's office. And we need a greater voice telling the lawmakers that we cannot sustain. And it's not just improving operations, it's we cannot maintain our current operations of fifty eight thousand dollars on a seven million dollar operations budget doesn't work. We can't do it.
What, do we pay the league anything?
We do.
Members, yeah.
How much?
Members, what?
Well, it's not
Um, do we pay them by uh population or how do we pay?
Population.
Population, yeah.
Yeah.
So you want that?
Yeah, it's Trump. I just wondered. No.
We're we're competing against every other um organization that's doing lobbying for whatever purpose down there. And although the league does a fairly good job, we're up against organizations that have pockets deeper than
Yep, oh heavens, yeah.
Private entities that have
Yeah, yeah, so there's a towns group and then there the league.
There's a county.
Oh, county too?
There's a town and then the league is the city.
That's the line.
And school?
Yeah.
School. So what, do you know just a pro- just a ballpark?
Yes, I have it. We have approximately six thousand dollars.
Oh.
That's the budget line.
Okay.
How much was that?
I
Six thousand. Six thousand, for the whole year?
We paid four thousand five hundred, okay, there's
For for the whole year?
Yeah, uh yeah, the twenty twenty one dues were four thousand five hundred twenty five.
That's probably the problem right there. We're not paying enough.
Well, I'm I'm serious, you're right in that one, very right, because uh
I'm serious, yeah.
give you an idea
I thought it was thirty thousand.
Yeah, to give you an idea of organization I worked for for a period of time, they're manufacturing a manufacturing organization, a business work organization. And we had a budget of of six million a year and we were assessed a thirty thousand dollar a year.
Wow, I mean, we we do uh just our company with the W G A, which is actually a grocery association, it's from the field, but you can join as a wholesale uh uh but we're doing six grand a year and we do probably thirty thousand dollars a year in advertising with them, so that it helps them even more and I'll tell you, they get a lot of work done. We give out grocery carts to the good ones and and bags that are broken to the bad ones.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
Um, I I um just I know that you mentioned that uh some of the other ideas include, um you know, change of the revenue calculation, sales tax. Um, I know there was discussions a while back about increase to the gas prices, would that be beneficial at all as I know the alternative idea of the, I believe that was a kind of like the alternative or counter argument to a wheel fee as well. Would that be beneficial at all? Just just throwing ideas out there.
So we we actually
We do not have the authority.
We would actually I know, I know that, but that's what, but what we're saying is lobbying for a change here, so
Yeah.
about potential idea, you know, you know, uh ideas, just just trying to
We need to get more, like right now, I think it's seventy five cents a gallon right now, is it? Not the state or somebody? Okay.
But um that with that idea, I think that includes our pool for general transportation aids.
Right, all, okay.
That's where that's gonna help. We did see an increase in our general transportation aids. Um, at this point, our general transportation Um at this point, our general transportation aids have gone up. We have increased the budgeted revenues by twenty-five thousand dollars to offset the increase in the maintenance fees that we budgeted for. And the balance of that is going to CIP to help offset some of those maintenance costs that we have been shipping shifting over to the um CIP fund.
Thirty-two point nine cents per gallon.
That, oh, I thought it was a lot more than that.
Uh that's state, federal is another uh.
Yeah.
Well, the other federal is another, I think sixteen or fifteen something.
There's just a lot of talk on the electric cars, you know, as as they're taking gas away, who's gonna replace that tax?
Well, and the other, increase the registration fees, I'd pay you an extra hundred dollars for having a hybrid.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Right.
Two of them.
Thank you twice.
But the other issue that that is not being addressed with all of those is the fact that now yeah Ford and a number of other vehicles are turning around saying we're doing this with a pickup truck. But they're actually adding a thousand pounds to the weight of those vehicles.
Damage load.
Which also deteriorates the roads faster. It's not being talked about.
That's true.
We're gonna charge in the water.
That's right, I save more than enough in fuel usage to pay for that extra tax.
Oh, yeah, no, I I agree, you know, the and and if you actually do a calculation on the the fuel tax that you would normally have for a person that drives a fifteen thousand miles a year to uh the electric cars or whatever else, that hundred dollars, a hundred and seventy-five dollars does not cover that anywhere is near.
Oh, so it's uh fifty cents per gallon, including federal.
But there's a safety issue too.
Yes.
I can't hear you coming. You're so quiet, it just whizzes by. You'd think more criminals would have those cars.
So that's why it makes noise in a parking lot. If you're below a certain speed, it actually makes a scream. It's like very annoying.
Wheezy. Yeah, all right, enough of that.
Okay.
Right, lobby for a change.
Next one.
It's this question on the sales tax, are you also like referring to a municipal sales tax annuals coming?
Yes.
Yeah, they don't go really well.
Yeah, so I could just throw ideas out there.
Uh. This is. Yeah, uh isn't, wasn't there a uh there was a municipality, I thought in the state of Wisconsin, that tried to do that and they, the only allowable ones are the ones that are currently listed. That's for uh stadiums, the stadium stuff. And there's also one for the uh areas of uh.
Tourism.
Tourism, yes. That's the only ones that are allowed in the state of Wisconsin at this point.
I think they tried to bring, you might know where if you were a certain size municipality, you were allowed to bring a local sales tax. I don't know if that went anywhere.
Well, Ramon is might be trying to tourism one because I think Rhinlander does, several of them, Monaco does, yeah.
Right.
I'm like, is Ramon he was talking about that?
I I think so as well. I guess the question I was was, you know, I think you touched base on it is uh what what uh criteria do we have to meet in order for us to be considered tourism, um a try, you know, municipalities, um because I mean, I guess um we are, you know, because you know, as you mentioned, Rhinelanders going forward, but what exactly do we, the criteria do we have to meet to in order to be considered a tourist?
Well, Ramon's gonna ski though, and North has all those lakes.
I think, yeah.
Okay.
What's that?
We're looking into that once upon a time, yeah.
I'll bet, I'll bet bikes would qualify. I bet the trails would qualify.
There we go.
Yeah.
Come towards.
Get a get a camping, a nice RV site around here, which nobody has. I'd love to go five minutes from my home.
I mean, even with us, even with the DCRS doing that dome as well too, um we're gonna try to uh you know, try to feed off that as well too here. Is that something, would that qualify as well? Uh who if we if we qualify for or something along that lines, ju- just as well.
Yeah.
I think the previous governor.
Oh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, yeah.
assigned, yeah, I didn't study, I'm with the plan.
Yeah.
And they present the plan at county association, but that's that's what it's got.
Okay.
He was very comprehensive. They looked at variety of options and they looked at the gas tax and wheel tax and you just name it, but they didn't let go in front.
Okay.
Okay, so we talked about the referendum. This decision to go for referendum is not one to be taken lightly because failure is really not an option. You can't go for referendum fail and I think you're gonna pass next time you try. Um it needs to be well planned and supported a hundred percent by board. I was researching referendums, so Fond du Lac just passed one and and that would be passed one in April. And then there was a municipality dumb self that passed one, self Milwaukee.
On what theme? What what did, how did, you know, because you gotta wrap this around something. So Fond du Lac, Fond du Lac did, what was the theme? What was the rallying cry?
So for Fond du Lac, they theirs was police and fire. They hired police and fire officers.
Because the, because I can see that. I can see that when we're working, we're trying to do something else.
That was the only one.
I I I I mean.
We had, we had no problem with our referendum many years ago with the fire, the fire thing.
Yeah.
I agree.
Right, right.
Um.
I mean, look at how successful the school was. I mean, look at how many failures we see constantly on schools.
All schools.
Versus versus this. This was over seventy percent.
Yeah, but it's crazy.
Whatever it was.
But like I said, I, the the only thing I can see passing for referendum is police and fire.
Well, or pets. Pets would be huge. You could do something on pets that we could get to use the money, dogs and cats.
Can we, can we hardly?
I thought you were saying.
We're taking care of the goats or what?
Yeah.
Can we hardly, we're taking care of the goats?
I don't know.
I got close.
Okay.
Perfect.
Could have one hell of a dog park, yeah.
There we go.
Okay.
So a lot of, like when I was researching it, a lot of the the two that I was looking at, they hired an outside firm and they really did um a very thorough job, lots of marketing, lots of educational sessions.
I wouldn't recommend it this year in Naxton.
Yeah.
No, I think the, I think the municipal center kind of shot us in the.
I I I think I agree with you. That is the biggest thing right now that people cannot see. How can you build a building and you can't fire, you can't hire a police officer? There, it's, if I go out and borrow for that police officer, I can hire that police officer, but I cannot hire that police officer out of my regular operating levy. I don't have any money. I mean, I'll, I do obviously, but to increase the funds necessary, there is not an easy answer there. But I can go borrow and I don't have to ask for any money.
That's.
That's, people don't get that. They do not understand the difference.
It's all about the way the government allows things to happen.
Well, if you think about it, the government can't say, well, you can't levy to pay your debt. Can you imagine the cost of borrowing for villages if the state has that right to limit how much you can levy? And we we would really be out of, we'd be paying through the nose because our bondholders wouldn't have secure reverence.
Well, that would, that would, if we did not have the ability to levy for our debt, the entire government entities would no longer exist.
Including the US government.
Right. Well, yeah, Lauren, I'll learn.
A question, uh, we've talked about all the possibilities and in the past we have used uh reserves.
Yeah.
How much is there and how much, if it's, if there is any there, how much can we use?
Undesignated fund balance.
Undesigned, well, I know we have a bunch of designated fund balances that we can't touch.
I was right now. Um at the end of twenty twenty, our general fund had an unassigned fund balance of two point seven million dollars. Um I wouldn't advise moving forward, moving um using any of that prior to our multimillion dollar bond that we're issuing for a new municipal center.
Okay, because it affects your bond rate, yeah, right.
It will affect our bond ratings. So that's something we have to be very careful with.
Does the the village, does that include the MPD and safer, no?
No, this is just the village.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And.
We have a policy that we are supposed to keep so much of our fund balance. We are above and beyond that.
Right.
But what I trying to tell you is I don't have any one-time expenditures stuck in the general fund anymore. They moved everything out. Usually when you have one-time uses, you can say, okay, we'll apply fund balance for that one-time use. But I don't have much like that. We really moved a lot out and in the proposed twenty twenty-two budget, there are not a lot of one-time requests. There are none actually, so.
Lauren? But I I know it's 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 a horrible subject and I'm taking a chance by mentioning reductions in staff. First, we all know the personnel are the most expensive part of running a municipal. And I think that should be on the table too.
I think it should be also. Um one of the comments why I want to bring revenues first is because you can cut a staff this year and next year you're gonna have to cut another staff because this is compounding. This is not, we're not, we're not keeping up with the increases. How do we do that? I'm not sure, but it's something that as a team, everyone's gonna have to work together. And the staffing, there's, everything's gonna be on the table when we come down to those discussions.
So what's, I I wanted to mention it because I mean, I mean, everybody doesn't wanna mention it, but we all know that personnel are the most important part.
When it comes down to everything, it it's gotta be part, it it does and it, yeah, it's tough stuff, but.
I mean, what's gonna happen, let's just say we did close the TIF. That's three hundred grand of wages that you have in there right now that.
So when we close the TIFs, because we get so much back more, eh, the amount of the admin is gonna be eating up some of that.
So we're we're gonna increase our taxes by the two hundred thousand, but we have three hundred of expenses, no, 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 no.
The amount that we can bring back, our total tax levy, if we were to close TIF one, we can bring back, it's about like six hundred and seventy thousand right now. Our total admin costs in there are about three hundred, so we get an extra three hundred thousand dollars of levy flexibility. But like Jessica was saying before, if you like fill that and say, oh, we're gonna fill that with people, the next year
Right, right, right.
you're gonna have whatever percent increases.
Well, right, no, I I just remember Play City here, was it last week, when you say that just to be average in police coverage, we should have an additional six cops and with two thousand calls there up to now and.
That was the purpose of our revenues. What we wanna bring to is we're not average and we're not, we have to think outside the box.
I know.
Go ahead to the next slide. I think we got a few more in here that we wanna talk about.
Oh, give me a hand up?
I'll wait, okay.
Doesn't like me, okay.
Okay, borrowing. In the end, chances are we're gonna end up borrowing for operations. Um I'm gonna be really embarrassed going to inner city saying, I need, I've no five hundred thousand dollars for operations. But I believe that is where we're gonna end up. I mean, obviously we got referendums and stuff, but we would have to phrase the referendum so it supports everyone. I mean, it's gonna be police focused, but we have to make sure we are organizing it so it will sustain us for at least five to ten years. Meaning that if we have ongoing increased expenses of say a hundred thousand dollars a year, this referendum and knowing that we can only levy an additional fifty, that referendum's gotta hold up that extra fifty or sixty the following year, every year. Because our net new construction isn't carrying us through.
So each million dollars of increased construction, new construction generates how much in revenue?
I don't remember.
Oh.
It's a net new construction. So what we talked about before, Keith asked for a nice little graph once before, they're not dollar for dollar. Because we have, it's a net new construction, so there's um subtractions and increases in there. So even though we have a a new million dollar project, there's also subtractions in there sometimes.
And it's still a percentage of your total value.
In the days before levy limits, that really didn't apply, did it? You could take as much as your new construction with a law, didn't it?
Do we, do we get to use, even though the taxes aren't there, but do we get to use structure at like DCRS?
No.
No? Everything is void, okay.
Right, that is.
Right.
Because they're they're actually their own taxing entity, so.
Yeah, did you have something?
Double taxing.
Give me a hand up?
No, I did not, sorry.
Oh, I thought you did. Okay.
So as I stayed on there, once we start borrowing, it's no- nothing we're probably gonna be stopping. I mean, it's gonna be an ongoing whether we borrow two hundred thousand, say this year, next year, we'll probably borrow three hundred thousand. It's just something that it's an option that the state has allowed us to do. And we just need to make sure that when we do set it up, that it's borrowed for the minimum amount of time to minimize the cost of debt that we'll be paying for that.
But then you gotta increase.
Yeah, it's gonna be increasing every year.
Because if you, if you borrow two hundred thousand for roads, for crack sealing, well, next year they're gonna be doing crack sealing, but you still got the two hundred thousand here.
That you paid for.
Now you're borrowing here.
I I know this is crazy and I can't even believe I'm gonna bring this up. But this crazy, you know, uh trillion dollar, you know, all Savior, put our grandkids in more debt. I mean, uh that's gotta come this way, right? As crazy as it is, you know, whatever they, one, two, three trillion, whoever, whatever mansion decides, is that gonna be another, you know, couple billion dollars?
But we can't raise our debt soon.
I I know, but for you.
You're talking about gifts, yeah.
Yeah, it's a mutual. Gifts, I I wouldn't.
I wouldn't hold your breath on that.
I know, I know, just wondering.
Yeah.
They can all buy.
For infrastructure funding, I mean, but that'd be again, capital funds.
They're talking about. Yeah, okay, you're right.
Yeah, that's, can we.
Better for those anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we don't know what you mean by human infrastructure.
That means people. Do we get people grants?
Yeah, okay.
People grants, great idea.
Well, it sounds.
I. People.
Okay, next one.
I would.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Yes.
Yep.
As I said before, we need to start thinking outside the box. An RV park is great. Maybe the village chiefs can use the Pro- Prohuska property and create an RV park. Um what's a kind of thinking about outside the box that we need to do? So this is a blog that is written by um a couple of people from GFW, GFW is Government Finance Officers of America, which includes Canada. By the way, um it says local governments are sitting on their own gold mine.
What have to dig for or what, what we have to do?
And it's saying we need to use the assets what we have, so creating an RV park at Prohuska and bringing in that revenue every year.
I will, I will, I will.
Is a great thinking outside the box, so that's just.
At least it would get used for something.
What, what would?
Die to swamp.
Um and is uh anyone annexation help? I mean, we we kinda talk about it, but are you looking at me with those eyes? What?
I think.
Are you squinting for me to finish? Oh, I didn't know if you wanted me like to not talk about it, but I mean.
I think you can talk about.
What kind of growth is that with? Because that's always kind of been the story when we had to separate the the two.
Right.
What happens if if that huge project with this water project and and we keep going or?
It's expanding to the east.
Oh, what what if? I don't know.
The net new construction calculation, I think, with damage.
No, that's, we'd have to see the allowable levy increase when you take on new property. Because it would be awesome to be able to go over that town and give them all our levy and be able to collect all that money. Because I think the levy of the town, you know, was it two dollars or so?
Oh, it could be a negative and they'd still have money left over.
Well, yeah, but but the real issue is, okay, if we would annex a of property or accessible property and their tax rate goes from their two dollar or whatever to our four dollar or five dollar and whatever cents it is. And that generates X amount of more dollars for us. Um we have to also remember that we're also incurring additional expenses at the same time. So it's not just a uh gr- grab and and run type of thing because you're going to have additional expenses and there's gonna be expectations. Because we can't just automatically just say, I want to an next step. They have to turn around and and want that also.
It it has to be a partnership.
Oh, yeah.
We we enjoy a great relationship with the town right now.
Even on the roads, we do.
And it's, you know, I I just don't know already what the talk is, you know, so.
Well, I guess to me, I don't know, I've seen different properties that are going up for sale right now or just sold. And I would think if they were gonna develop it being where it's at, um they almost would be wanting.
Right.
Sewered water. And I don't think we should ever expand the sewer water without annexation.
Without being coming in the village.
Without what?
Annexation.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Because that's the only.
No utilities without annexation.
So we we have, what percentage of our village right now is not watered and sewed here or not? So we we have, what percentage of our village right now is not watered and sewn? You're not. So did I hear, did I hear twenty eighty? What?
I'm not.
What, you're I you're not, so.
Really, out there?
No, she's not.
It's all around me, but it's.
Yeah, right by me, right by me, there's twenty homes that aren't, you know.
It's about, still, I I don't think it's changed much from when we did that studies about ten, ten or fifteen years ago.
But.
There are about five hundred homes on private systems, give or take, I think that we that we were kind of including in those studies and what do we, what's our total uh? If that's say two and a half people in a home, it's probably uh, what, twelve hundred or twelve thousand, yeah, twelve hundred, give or take.
Okay.
So maybe what, a tenth? Yeah, I mean somewhere maybe, you know, eighty-five, eighteen.
But I mean, that doesn't increase, that if I, if you put sewer and water in my house, that doesn't increase the tax levy because I.
No, no. No, I I'm just, well, I'm taking a growth.
It would increase.
I'm just, I'm taking a growth and stuff, yeah.
Um.
But it could, it would increase the collections on that payment alone of taxes that.
Well, yeah, but it's not quite that.
Um, it's levied on the uh, infrastructure that the utility has.
Okay, okay.
Okay, big tax.
What is this book here? What's the book called?
You know.
Is this a book or is this?
It's a book, yes.
It is a book.
It's a free book.
Where do I, oh, free?
Can you read it? I can't.
Can we have a copy?
I can send you a link, Mark. Or I can send it out to everybody if you guys want that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I they're truly free, you can just say, I want that book and they'll send.
So it's just, it's online PDF.
You have to. Ah.
So you go online on GFOA's website and they have like articles. And this is one of those articles. So you go on there and you can just open the PDF.
Oh, so it's just an article, not a book?
Yeah, I think it's like, I don't think it's too many pages.
Did you read it?
How many? Yeah, that's right. I I, you know what, I'm asking too many questions. Just send, send another revenue stream. Send me the link.
Another revenue stream. No, just send us the link that we would be able to look at it anyway.
Yeah. Yep.
Yep.
Super, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
It's good. That was definitely.
Was that guy saying dog or date?
I think.
Dag?
Oh, dag? Oh, like dag, like dag would.
Dag, dog.
Wow. Yeah, this is the last one.
Dog has been in the news lately, so I just wanted to make sure.
So another thinking outside the box, service analysis. Um, is that something that would be interested in having someone assist support and assessing services and selecting priorities? Um, I think that eventually when we, as we're moving forward, that needs to be done. We need to have a good assessment of what services the village does provide. And basically prioritizing.
I I think that's absolutely great. I do, especially with as often this says changes and the makeup changes. You know, sometimes you don't think it does, but it truly does, you know?
Right.
But one of the biggest talks I had on this third round of me being here, I think it was with Jen and Keith. And you know, how do you anticipate uh, with a change, you know, and and you don't think it's gonna happen, but then it does happen. And uh, I'm I'm trying to think of some of some of the years that maybe stayed a little more steady and then some were a little more volatile. And and some, it, well, some of it is strictly because of the change with the elections. So, yeah.
Questions.
Yeah.
Um.
It's been really good since you got out of here though.
Oh.
So if you were gonna ask that question. Oh, go ahead.
Um, I guess this is probably jumping off uh, Trusty White's question about staffing here, I guess. Uh, has administration, you don't even attempted to review our staff positions and seeing if there's anything that could definitely, it could be cut at all or, uh, or you know, just the tough question, throwing that out there.
Well, I think that's part of this whole budget process since it comes up, I um, obviously that's something that has to be done.
Well.
But I don't have.
You know, not just at this level, right, right there, that one slogan can be taken everywhere in the village, everywhere. It it can be a road person, it can be someone out on the, a- anyone can rethink of, wow, there's a better way of doing this. You know, we're 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 sending three people out here to to do this, you know, but yet maybe I I think two can handle this. So if everyone is thinking this, it doesn't have to be, you know, with administration, you know, looking at the rest of the staff. It can be everybody trying to help out. And and then by doing that, you could be saving your own hours, maybe your own position, who knows?
Yeah, I I have.
If we can do that more, yep.
I have a second.
Duck tail and then barb, yep.
Yeah, I have a second question was, um, uh, the county does something like called priority based budgeting. Have we looked into doing something along that way?
I would love to do that. Jen always talked about it. Um, but that requires having more of a strategic plan.
Right.
A planned vision and that would be a long-term goal, but we have a lot of work to do to get to that point.
How many county board members are there?
Thirty, thirty-eight.
With thirty-eight, uh, election doesn't make a big change. It it really doesn't.
Yeah.
And you know, when they thought about downsizing it, it's not really the dollars that are saving. It might become more volatile with less county board supervisors. When when you have thirty-eight,
Right.
it kinda, it it takes gradual turns. When you have seven and and you get two new ones, that's a big deal.
I think, I think if everyone could get on the same page and really agree on the future vision.
Mm-hmm.
Priorities of the village and then stick to them. Like, if you move forward and every decision that you make needs to really follow the agreed vision, forward-looking of where the village is going, I think that would be a lot easier if everyone was on the same page, which would be part of the whole thing of developing a strategic plan with a vision and forward thinking.
There's an awkward silence here.
So this is.
All all I'm thinking about is Wally and I and E being elected in the same year. So, all right, I get it. I'm sorry, I get it, all right.
Uh, go ahead. So the strategic planning topic is something we touched on with.
Yeah. Yep.
Administrator review, but.
Yep.
What does it, what does it put us, put us for this budget season?
And that's.
Uh, maybe, just need to.
Listen.
Well, he's kinda caught on it and you know, it's something we are gonna be continually talking about.
I I I am definitely a big supporter of doing a strategic plan. Uh, that would definitely help us set our priorities.
Yeah. I I don't think we can grasp it that fast.
No.
No, 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 you're being, wow, thank you. Thank you.
Now.
No, okay.
Wow, thank you. Thank you.
You're, you're.
But that's something that we need to start thinking. This is why we're talking about this now. Not necessarily for this year, but for next year, we need to start the conversations. Even if the board's gonna change, we still need to have people ready to talk about in in the right direction.
Yep, I agree.
And I think what we gotta remember is, I think you touched on it. Say we eliminate, eliminate one or two positions this year to get our budget to balance. I don't know if it could, we just one or two, but say it could. All right, next year comes along. What do we do?
Yeah.
We keep cutting staff? I mean, that isn't solving the real issue. If you're getting rid of someone that you don't need in the organization or you can contract something out, that was another thing I thought of, is can we contract anything? Can we get somebody to, like with the town of Weston? Is there anybody else out there that would like to contract with us? But I I don't see anybody out there.
Well, so partnerships that we could talk about and, you know, it it, I I don't mean this to be intentional, but cutting services.
It, I guess the question I would throw out there is that, um, it's not, I'm I'm not asking this as a directive, you know, from my personal opinion there, but more of a kind of like a hypothetical question that if we were, if the board was to automatically cut five percent off, what the question for staff would be, for them to go back and review their departments and um, kind of come up with solutions to that. Um, not necessarily like we're gonna act on that, but it's more like a brainstorming session as well too, just as we come up with. Um, you know, there may be answers that we don't know, you know, that, uh, there may be other options as well, but just throwing that kind of as a hypothetical questions to staff to kind of go back and review.
Well, sometimes the exercise, you know, in in not actuality, but the actual doing the exercise is big. So that it's it's not new if it actually happens, you know, it's, my world is losing a customer, you know? We lost a monster customer a couple of years ago and within two months, we were back.
I guess the other, I mean, before you started, you know, thinking about cutting staff or whatever, and I'm not saying that's out of the realm. Um, but I guess, and we did this a few years ago and I can't remember what we, if it accomplished anything, is that we kind of put down, what do you do? What is your day? What, where are you spending your time? Is, can we utilizing
That's.
possible staff?
You know, the only way I've ever accomplished that is to have a third party.
Yeah.
There's, I've never been able to do that. It's, you know, it's like doing your own review, whatever. If you don't have a third party, if you don't have somebody else in there that's thinking outside of the box, it's, it's amazing what they'll put, I mean, uh.
Oh, yeah.
We we had somebody here that's not, no longer here. And when I saw what was being written down for the weekly activities, I I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe that person was working and and they're not here anymore, but I was, I was shocked what they thought was relevant to put down for what they did here. Right.
Well, I was just thinking, when you were talking to farmers, how how was that put in there? Um, what other things the staff?
You know, farmer's market?
I know that you are, you talked about once, I said, well, do we have to go to every ribbon cutting? I mean, that's taking time.
Oh, heavens no. Ribbon cutting is, my god, that's a pleasure. Why wouldn't we wanna go? Oh, for Renee or any of us? Oh, my gosh, we should go. That's, that's nothing. Twenty, twenty percent or twenty thousand dollars out of that farmer's market, that's a start. That's a start. And and you you'd you'd be shocked at how much is actually there in any organization, any organization.
Well, I just wanna add, that's why I threw out the idea, the hypothetical question for staff to just kind of think about that. If the board did end up saying that we're gonna cut a five percent across, what would they remove? What would they change? What would they do? Just kind of a hypothetical question so that they can start thinking. Cause they know their job positions a lot better, they know their departments. And they may come back with better alternative ideas that we may not know. Or just, it's just a hypothetical question to start off with. And we may, you know, and administration may end up reviewing that and actually makes changes. Because I I, uh, you know, we we can cut from a, make changes from a broad level, but it's really the staff who knows the details that can really cut those, make those changes. I mean, a good example is the sheriff's department at Fairland County. Um, the board, they said that they wanted to fund six dispatcher positions. And then they, the Maryland County Sheriff's Department ended up reviewing their own expenses and making the cuts from there and ended up saving for those six positions. So just kind of a thought, you know, just kind of a thought process cause there's no way we would know what to cut entirely, but staff definitely does.
So a lot of.
I think one thing you gotta bear in mind is when we make an estimate, they overestimate the projects, they overestimate the budget. So at any given time, when we look at your budget, there could be at least five to ten percent increase in there, extra in there. Because of, because they're not sure what's coming out and what's gonna be happening.
So I agree with him. And one of the line items that we looked at was supplies, cause we all have supplies in our budget. But then we ran a report of how much supplies we really have. I think it was five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's maybe ten, but it's not.
So, we could consolidate it all.
It would help us make.
Cut the budget in half and save twenty-five hundred dollars.
How much twenty-five hundred? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, a lot of our budgets aren't very big. And we talk about, um, what you can do to cut and where's some specific savings. As somebody mentioned, it, the the wages are huge for our budgets. Um, and some of the budget items.
Yeah, they are anywhere though. Wages are huge.
Um, are not like cuttable. For example, within the finance department, I have insurance. Um, insurance is going up. That's one thing that with, we're looking at our current building. It's, um, I think it's valued at two point five million dollars.
This is?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
So when you look at that and then look at our new building, it's, there's an increase there. So that's something that we're seeing in the future. We don't have the exact numbers yet, but there's gonna be a change.
We have to have a sit-down with our assessor.
Yeah.
It's not, not, that that's not the issue. They send out their man and say, this is what it's gonna be worth. Um, the other thing that, um, and I'm I'm not sure, um, you always have the issue with the health insurance, et cetera. And that's an ongoing issue regardless of wherever you were at. Um, I am going to, uh, when I worked for Sheldon's, they turned around and went not through an agency, but went directly to and cut their costs substantially, the tune of forty percent. And I will take it on myself to find out where and what and get back to you once, uh, okay? Just to give you an idea, I don't know if it would, it has anything to do or would work with you. But they cut forty percent off of their cost of their health insurance. And they have the same, same company, same coverages.
Really?
Yes. There's, there's things you can do. You can, you can, you can incentivize a spouse his insurances if you, if you have a little bit of payment there. There's, there's a lot of different things. There's, there's different ways you can. But but anyway, I I will take it on myself. I'll find out, cause I. How many insured employees do we have there? I mean, is it under fifty or over fifty?
Well.
The village itself is under fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, man.
Mister President, just have, I'm sorry. Uh, I have another question here and uh, it's another naive question as well too, so bear with me here, uh. But I I I recall there was a effort from the organizations in the past here that tried to kind of like, um, do a group-wise, you know, uh, uh, group-wise bid for their health proposals or something along the lines of that. Did that, is that not a possibility anymore? I'm just.
So, a co-op.
We're a cooperative.
Yeah, we did, we did two years ago. Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, well, I'm, but I'm talking about like with, oh, oh, I guess I was just kinda thinking like the larger scale.
I mean, going in with other municipalities, yeah, we did try to do that, but as as far as I recall, the the cooperative has done a lot for us.
Right.
So. Right.
Right.
It's been two great years and they gave us a list. We had to give it back to them of the area, uh, and and there were some good sized companies.
It's a combination of private and public.
Yep.
Uh, entities and uh,
Mm-hmm.
zero percent increase in our insurance premiums. That's.
That's unheard of.
That's heck, right?
I don't know if we're gonna see that next year.
Probably. But.
Okay.
So to wrap up, I guess, we can't just look at expenditures. We're gonna have to look at revenues. We threw out lots of ideas. Some are totally out there, never gonna happen, but some hopefully in the future, we will be using them such as the the street name that's moving over. Knowing everything that we're doing is limited, not sustainable.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
We could sign a GoFundMe page.
And you will go fund me?
This was a good meeting.
There we go.
Yep, very good meeting. Very, very good presentation.
I think you'd be surprised.
Discussion, yep.
My problem.
Yeah, we don't have sugar daddies like Marilah does.
Oh, we've got, we've got some very good donations here.
Well, for the, for the.
To school, well, that's fantastic. What what's better than education?
I I just have a quick question here. I know that we had a lot of discussions here, but I guess when are we, what are the next steps?
Yep.
What are we looking, when are we looking to actually act on this deal or?
So officially this year, we will bring back our, a more finalized budget in O E M P D's tomorrow. Um, safer, not to the fourteenth. So on the eighteenth, we're gonna be bringing back a budget.
Yep.
And we're gonna have, I don't know if it's gonna be balanced. We're gonna have to see, we're gonna look through a couple items yet and see what we can tweak. And if there's questionable things that we as staff feel that we need to be bringing to the board, we're gonna bring it to you and have some options available to make sure that the balance, the budget that we are gonna adopt is gonna be balanced. Um, if we cannot agree on the final version on the eighteenth, we will, I'm hoping to have a meeting on the twenty-fifth. If it doesn't happen, then that's fine, but that will just ensure that our budget adoption will probably happen the week of Thanksgiving. So we just gotta wait to see, see how the eighteenth looks and move on from there, see what options we have available.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, Barb?
Well, let's see, I gotta stop and think where we are here.
Uh, policy issues?
I was on the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was, I I was off of the agenda and on the evil things here, so I discovered. Um, all right, uh, policy issues, do discussions or anything on that? All right. Resolu- well, do you, resolution and ordinances? Nothing there, um, that we go to. I just went right past future items. And they had, now you were saying the next, uh, proposed meeting will be um, October eighteenth at four thirty, or is this, now this will be our regular meeting. um, October eighteenth at four thirty, or is this, now this will be our regular meeting, right?
Right.
So I think we might want tourism commission. Do we want tourism maybe?
We're probably on tourism commission.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Okay, so tourism and then we'll have to.
Yeah. It might even be for the next two, if we don't get it done, right? Okay.
And then we'll have to see if we have a finance committee agenda items. And if we do, we probably would push off board maybe till five.
Okay.
Joint meeting at five, that would give us an hour of the board meeting.
Who approves tourism or is tourism its own entity?
Who approves?
Who?
It's a commission, yeah.
Who's the chair?
It's pretty much its own.
I I know, but we just wanna, if if the board has to say yes to it, just make sure that.
I think.
I think I am, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I was gonna say.
We just wanna make sure we can do it the same now.
Yeah, I'm the chair at that point.
Okay, well, there you are. So should I ask a question again? Well, we we'll have all the players there, so it's okay, fine.
Okay.
They were going.
Being the four thirty, which is the.
Yep.
Tourism starts at four thirty.
Yep.
And then.
Yep.
Um.
May or may not have finance.
And then five o'clock is the joint?
Yes.
Okay.
So we should just have agendas, agenda, agendaed, that we may approve that C V B, that night, right? Okay, good.
We can either put around the joint meeting if you wanna just get it all done away.
Sure. Okay. Set, hold on.
Okay. And then um okay, you got a, or question mark, that's what we kind of talked about.
Yep.
Right, yeah, we're good.
Okay, topic for future meetings, the budget?
Thinking out of the box.
Base HSA contributions? Anything else that you can think of?
No, so Sherry got insurance numbers. We got, um, she's planning getting the health insurance committee together. And then we plan, the committee plans on proposing a recommendation to the board. And that's where the board will get presented with the options and um what's happening for our new insurance, our our continuing insurance for twenty twenty-two months.
Um, remarks from finance, from staff? Nothing? Alrighty. Remarks from committee members, anything about?
Oh, no. Uh, remarks from board members?
Um, I just want to note that the C V B is planning bringing on their director in the next couple of weeks here, so I'm excited for that.
That'd be good timing, yeah.
Yes, I I definitely think it's greatly in timing here, so I'm looking forward to, I'll be eventually hearing introducing him to the board here once.
Do we know his name yet or not yet?
Uh, they they will make it a public.
Oh, okay, cool. Anybody else on the board? Uh, remarks? No? Um, you have any announcements? I have none.
I have none. What's, Bob, you have anything?
No.
See?
I have nothing, no.
Okay, I have nothing. Okay. No. Yeah. Mark, you're.
What's on Twitter? Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay, and then they're dealing with the board, other board members having?
Oh, no, I said remarks.
Okay.
I didn't think they had anything. Uh, you you talked about the C V B. I did, that's.
Yeah. And anybody announcements? Other than we're both? That desert looked pretty. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
So.
Uh, trustee?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so we are, we are adjourned.
Motion by, motion board of trustees to adjourn, so moved. By Zong and by Zagami, uh, first and second. All anymore in discussion? None? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Closed, so carried. We're thirty seconds behind finance. Thank you, everybody.
Jessica, nice job.
Yeah, very nice job.
Emma, you did.
Dana, you too. Everybody did.
And. And you.
And uh, and uh, I'm gonna go home and have a
Stop recording.
Old old salad.